The, if you're ready.
All right, we're official now.
So I think we're going out over the air. I, I think we will start since we have a presentation today about mobility. And I will start now, I call this meeting to order. Welcome. I'd like to call the July fifteenth, twenty twenty-one regular meeting of the N C D this planning, planning commission to order at six P M. Please turn off your cell phones or set them to vibrate and please also mute the microphone unless you're speaking. Agendas for this meeting are available online. And at this time, let's record reflect that three of the planning commissioners are present with Commissioner Sheridan absent. And then we have an unplanned vacancy in the, I believe it's New Encinitas Planning Commission representative. So there. We can't.
Lucadia.
Sorry, oh, Lucadia. I can never. Got that wrong. Sorry about that. Lucadia Planning Commission Representative. And we start the meeting with the pledge allegiance. Please join me. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God with liberty and justice for all. Let's see, any announcements, Roy, that we need to make going live in the future? Do we know the date yet?
August nineteenth.
August nineteenth. Awesome. And so the subject to future state orders, of course, if, if the, if they change and like I heard L A just added a mask indoor mask requirement today. But so we continue tonight with special arrangements for the planning commission meeting due to the COVID nineteen pandemic. Pursuant to the State of California Executive Order N dash twenty-nine dash twenty and the amended county health order dated March eighteenth, twenty twenty, which limits gathering to no more than ten people. Members of the public will only be allowed to participate in the meeting electronically. Tonight's meeting can be accessed and watched from the city's live webcast feed at H E T P S colon slash slash N C E D S C A dot gov slash government slash agendas dash webcasts. Normally, the planning commission is also available for viewing on channel nineteen of Cox Communications, channel twenty-four on Time Warner Cable and channel ninety-nine on A T T Universe, U verse. Unfortunately, tonight, these services are unavailable due to the ongoing and hopefully soon to be done broadcast room renovations at City Hall. Public comments must be submitted via email. Tonight's agenda describes the process in detail, but I will summarize it. Written public comments to the planning commission must be submitted via email by two P M on the day of the meeting and will be forwarded to the entire planning commission. To make oral public comment during the meeting, including oral communications, consent calendar or on regular items, you must register also by two P M on the day of the meeting to join the electronic meeting. Members of the public speaking commission will not be shown on video. They will be able to watch and listen if you speak when called upon. Each speaker may address the commission for up to three minutes or in accordance with the time period established by the chair. Our next item is oral communications. We start each meeting with oral communications where anyone wishing to speak on a topic not on tonight's agenda may request to do so by following the process as previously described. Amanda, do we have any oral communications?
Yes, Chair, we have seven speakers tonight. As I read the names, please let me know if you wish to speak on an item not on the agenda. The first speaker is John Carr Bill Sell.
I'm, I'm sorry if this is me, I just applied for the agenda item.
Okay. I'll go ahead and add you. Our next speaker is Nishant Ketter Paul.
Looks like I T. Do you see?
I'm not seeing them, but I'll try and muting the two phone numbers that called in.
Okay.
Not getting any response.
Okay, well, we'll see if they chime in later, if they're similar to the previous caller who intended to speak on the item. This is the third one.
Next, we have Laurel Leary.
Let's see the whole set. Oh, I see. I see Susan down there. Susan, did you join?
Unmuted. Okay, there I unmuted. Thank you. Laurel Le Mary. I am director of the Rancho Santa Fe Association as well as a member since two thousand and three of the San Gito Planning Group, and we've discussed your project at length in both of those organizations.
And Laurel, can I interrupt you momentarily?
Yes.
I believe you're, you're wanting to speak on item nine A.
Oh, is that?
And?
Yes.
Yeah. And so you're right now, we're in the oral communications for any item not on our agenda.
I'm so sorry.
No, it's fine. No, it happens all the time, given the Zoom environment. What I would ask is hang on the line.
I will.
Amanda will call you again during item nine A.
Okay, I'll be so happy and I'll turn the mute on.
Okay, thank you. And let me just check. I, I see Susan Sherrod's name there. Susan, I, you're muted right now. Are you, are you able to hear us yet? Hmm, okay.
Connect.
Susan, you're, you're, I think we hear bits of you. You're breaking up and we cannot understand what you're saying.
Better.
Nope. I think you said better, but I, I only got the last three quarters of the word. You might need to drop and reconnect and, and we're in oral comments right now, so I would suggest in the interest of time that we continue with the oral comments. And, and I T, if you can contact Susan perhaps via cellphone or text and, and see if we can work through her I T issues.
Can I make a suggestion as we call our speakers? If we could also call who's next in line after that so that they can be prepared?
Sure.
Because otherwise this can bog down pretty quick.
Okay.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Gerald Kessler, followed by Brian Lucas.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Okay, I would like to give my weekly P S A about the Staver project. I would like to speak about this environmental nightmare, the Staver Housing Project on Melba set to build thirty-one homes on six point six acres on Melba Road, which is slated to take down a grove of mature tory pines, two hundred and ten other trees and a historical home built in nineteen thirty-four. This project is based on the density bonus law A B two, three, four, five, which gives free range to out-of-town developers in our community. This beautiful piece of property is seated between the last rural horse farm in Encinitas, the Boys and Girls Club and Garden, Oak Crest Middle School and two preschools, Bethlehem Church and Encinitas Community Center. The Staver family has been stewards of the land in both Encinitas and surrounding areas. This project is out of character from the way they have conducted business, business. Hello? It has sat in the neighborhood for, and many longtime taxpay residents that have resided with their families here for several years and they have had to seek medical care because of the impact of this housing project will create by destroying the beautiful tree line that can be seen the entire length of Melba Road. I have asked the city and the county for help in preservation of this beautiful piece of property. And I'm asking that the Staver family continue to be stewards of the land and not develop the property, instead preserve this piece of property and continue the family legacy as of stewards of the land. I just wanted to say I'm sorry that Amy Flicker has resigned recently. I hope that you get someone that is, is passionate, environmentally conscious and sensitive to the community character of North County and it's, it's to replace her. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Brian Lucas, followed by Daniel Clausenstock.
Hi, everyone. This is. Guess. Have come on the, on the nine eight project, so I don't have other than agenda item comments.
Okay, so you'll hang on and, and you can get, you'll get called put on the list for nine eight.
Perfect. Thank you.
Next, we have Daniel Clausenstock, followed by Craig Sherman.
So by the way, Susan just texted me saying she couldn't join, so I'm going to tell her to contact I T.
Well, it now it's working. I don't know. It's working.
Okay, that, that's what we're trying to get to. So I, we, we heard you clear that time, so if the minutes will reflect that Susan was also able to join at this point at six seventeen.
This is Dan Clausenstock. I'll make a little time right now because I'll actually be speaking on item nine A, not right now.
Okay.
Thank you. And last speaker, we have Craig Sherman.
Yeah, me as well. I'm, I'm here for nine A. I think that was just a labeled mistake there.
Okay. Okay, great. So our next item is a special presentation on the mobility element update. That Jennifer?
It is, and Evan, who is in the room, so I'm going to let him set up his PowerPoint and he'll be writing the update. So this, um, the presentation tonight, it's just to give everybody in the public watching tonight a little bit more information about that mobility element and its process over the next year and a half to two years and a lot of postcards just went out and so a lot of people should be getting those either today, yesterday, tomorrow within the community and we recommend that everybody go, yep, that's the one. And that everybody go to the website. So you know, there were some questions about why there wasn't a location. And postcards, when you design them, in case others don't know, take, you have to be prepared a month ahead of when the actual was. So we're in the midst of COVID and weren't quite sure if we were going to be able to meet in person and so right now we're going to plan to meet in person, but Evan will talk a little bit about that as he gives his presentation tonight. So Evan, go ahead and take it away.
Yes, thank you, Jennifer. Good evening, planning commission. I'm Evan Jednak, project planner for the mobility element update. So the mobility element, previously known as a circulation element, is a section of the city's general plan that identifies a multimodal transportation network to serve the community's needs. The element will analyze all of the current available transportation options in order to identify a comprehensive network that will serve the community in the future. The last comprehensive update to the element was in nineteen eighty-nine when the population was much lower and transportation options were very different. Since then, the city has grown and transportation options continue to expand. So the mobility element identifies a safe, efficient and adequate circulation system that responds to the transportation and infrastructure needs of all modes and users, including drivers, cyclists, pedestrians, transit users and rail users. It identifies the location of existing and future transportation needs in the city, long-term goals and policies for community mobility over the next thirty years and strategies to reduce vehicle speed, increase driver retention and protect vulnerable users on local streets and to reduce overall vehicle miles traveled. So there are four main project components. The primary portions being the mobility element update and the corresponding environmental impact report. A third project component is the mode share and mode shift, which involves conducting an existing mode share analysis to determine baseline transportation mode use for the city and development of mode shift targets and goals. There is a separate but related project component, which is the implementation plan for S B seven forty-three, which will not be covered in the presentation tonight, but to touch very briefly on it, S B seven forty-three eliminates road level of service as a sequo metric and requires vehicle miles traveled as the metric for transportation impacts analyses. So S B seven forty-three and the mobility element are mostly independent, but they are similar and so both are being processed under this larger project. And mobility element goals should be consistent with S B seven forty-three goals. So phases, there are three project phases, the first phase being the strategy visioning and existing conditions phase. This will generally take place in twenty twenty-one and result in an outline of the mobility element goals and an existing conditions analysis. The second phase is network development, which will occur in early twenty twenty-two. This phase will result in the development of a mobility network with alternatives and preferred networks. The third and final phase is the mobility element network selection and environmental impact report, which will occur from mid twenty-two to twenty-three. This phase will complete the environmental document and involve final presentations and approvals. And so each phase will include a public outreach, as is noted towards the top of this graphic. Phase one of the project is the strategy visioning and existing conditions analysis phase. This foundational phase involves a data and literature review, which our consultant W S P is currently working on and also includes transportation modeling verification and the existing conditions analysis.
Oh.
By the conclusion of this phase, the city intends to develop a mobility toolkit, which could include a network of complete streets, an electric vehicle charging facility strategy and designation of mobility hubs. So phase two of the project will build off the foundation established in the existing conditions analysis and focus on mode shift goal setting as well as further community and stakeholder engagement. The project team will refine the draft goals, policies and programs that are the result of community engagement in phase one and apply them to developing three circulation network alternatives. The network alternatives may include similar concepts, but with different levels of implementation costs corresponding to proposed, different proposed multimodal roadway cross-sections. The project team will next analyze the three network alternatives using multimodal metrics. These two deliverables include maps and project lists for three proposed circulation networks, model output data, alternative evaluation results, cross-sections for key roadway segments and a citywide map of all street classifications. The project will develop a range of roadway types throughout the city that can support a variety of needs, including areas that may support transit, biking and walking more frequently. This will include a review of the current classification system and recommended updates based on project goals and policies, analysis results, public input and applicable laws and regulations. Based on the network alternatives analysis and, and community input, the city will select a preferred circulation and mobility network. So shown in this slide are factors that can impact the network, including population, housing, employment density, future land use and key destinations and routes. Phase three is the environmental compliance portion. The technical analysis completed during phase two will serve as the basis for the transportation analysis in the E I R. The city proposes to prepare a focused programmatic E I R that addresses key resource areas that may be affected by the element update. The consultant team will assist the city through developing a traffic model and completing a V M T based sequel analysis to analyze the impacts of the element update. So public outreach and engagement is a primary focus of the mobility update. An outreach will occur throughout the project's timeline in a number of different forms, including the following. The project website, the city has established a project webpage, Encinitas C A dot gov slash mobility element, which includes links to important documents and a place to sign up for project email alerts. Staff is encouraging all interested residents to sign up for email alerts. Promotional materials, the city has developed materials and arranged mailing services for citywide postcard mailers to encourage participation in the community workshops and other activities listed below. In community workshops, the project scope calls for two community workshops, which will be the largest outreach events. The first workshop will be conducted on August third at six P M at the community center and will involve reviewing existing conditions and gathering ideas and input for potential project goals and policies. This workshop will include breakout groups, one for each community and include a Spanish language interpreter. The workshop will be recorded and included on the project webpage. The second workshop will occur in early twenty twenty-two and will generally follow the format of the first, but will focus more on proposed network alternatives. Pop-up outreach, the city will plan and conduct these events at community locations, which may include a farmer's market, et cetera, things like that. And then office hours for members of the public who may not have access to a computer. A member of the project team will be available by phone for designated office hours. So as part of the mobility element update, the city is looking forward to consolidating the progressive policies from its various strategic community and neighborhood plans, such as the climate action plan, active transportation plan, rail corridor vision study, cross-connect and others into one cohesive citywide framework. The climate action plan includes policies for reducing vehicle miles traveled and reducing greenhouse gas emissions. The act of transportation plan encourages a mode shift to bike, pet and other non-vehicular modes. The rail corridor vision study and cross-connect implementation plans identify locations where pedestrian and bicycle access across the train tracks could be installed or improved. And the modal alternatives plan is the implementation portion of the A T P and we have an upcoming slide on that project. But first here, the project schedule, so shown here is the draft schedule with opportunities for involvement. Summer twenty-one, where we are now, public engagement activities to educate and gather input on project goals and policies and existing conditions. This will include the upcoming community workshop on August third. Fall twenty-one, development of draft transportation networks. Winter twenty-one, twenty-two, public engagement activities to gather input on draft transportation networks. This will include the second community workshop. Spring and summer of twenty-two, analysis of draft transportation networks, selection of the preferred network and preparation of the environmental analyses. Fall twenty-two is the public review of the draft element and the environmental impact report. And then winter twenty-two and possibly into twenty twenty-three, the city council approval of the final element and the E I R. So next steps of the mobility element are shown here. As noted, the very, one last time, the first public outreach meeting, August third at six P M at the community center. We're working on completion of data and literature reviews that's currently underway by W S P. Development, development of draft goals will occur and will be based primarily on the public inputs received at the first community workshop. And then the element outline is currently being developed and then existing conditions analysis is currently underway. So as I mentioned, the, the modal alternatives project, or MAP for short, is based on the city's active transportation plan. So the city's A T P was approved in twenty eighteen. The MAP is the implementation plan portion of the A T P and the MAP is funded by a Caltrans grant and will do the following here. It'll develop a prioritize a list of the community's bike and pedestrian projects based on a variety of safety connectivity and use demand factors. It will also provide detailed site plans and fact sheets for each project, making the prioritized projects ready for capital grant funding. The project will develop thirty-five concept plans total with five contract plans for each community and ten citywide projects. The MAP will have its own public engagement process focused on low income and disadvantaged communities. And it will include strategies to integrate new technologies with ride share, bike share and autonomous vehicle requirements. The project will also set the stage for the rapid installation of on-street bike, electric bike and pedestrian facilities. So the MAP will be integrated with the mobility element wherever feasible. For example, the random survey portion of the MAP will influence the goals and policies of the mobility element. The mode shift and network development portion of the mobility element will then influence the prioritization of the MAP projects. And that'll conclude the presentation and staff is available to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, first, let me make sure Susan was having a little trouble getting in. I think she's actually leaving and rejoining right now. She was having, she has poor Wi-Fi reception right now. So Susan, do we have?
Yeah, I'm, it's. I, I, it's working now, but I'm not going to put my video on because it seems to be causing the trouble. I don't know.
That's probably.
But I'm here, I'm listening.
Very good idea.
I'll mute.
Okay, so any questions? I see Kevin and you'll have to speak up, Susan, since I can't see your hand.
So this is a concerning, the, this is all very exciting, the circulation element update or mobility update, as we're known. The August third workshops, uh, I know this is something I'm, is this the first we're notifying people of this or? Because I've dialed into this and this is the first I've heard about it. This is so important. We want big outreach on this.
Yeah, a, a postcard mailer was sent out and it should, it did hit mailboxes citywide this week, probably in the last couple days. Um, maybe some people in the city have not yet received it. It looks like Chair Ayler's.
I would have recognized that. It's probably in my mailbox right now.
Yeah, you know, it, it may be rolling out over the next couple days. Um, and so that, as Jennifer mentioned at the beginning of the, this presentation, the, the postcard is a save the date. It directs folks to our website where there is further information about the location. At the time, the, the postcard was designed and sent out. We weren't sure if it was virtual. If the workshop would be virtual or in person, which is why it does not include the location. But yeah, it directs people to the website, which should be up to date with, with everything.
And we did confirm this week, so we just confirmed this week that we would be in person at the community center. So everybody that has signed up on constant contact to receive updates on the project will be receiving an email tomorrow. Um, and we hope that everybody does sign up and then also public notice in the paper will be published tomorrow. And then we will also be putting notices in the city manager's newsletter next week.
Great. If I can hop in with a quick question, I, I noticed you used circulation element one time during your presentation and mobility element. Are they the same thing and, and are we, are we going to rename it in the general plan? Or how, how's that going to work? What, what's the relationship between circulation element and mobility element?
Yeah, it, oh, I was, I was just going to say, if, if I said circulation element during my presentation, that was a mistake. Uh, they are one in the same. It is now known as mobility. It was previously known as circulation and Jennifer can add on.
Sure, in the state law, um, the general plan needs to have a circulation element and city council, when we did the contract for W S P for this item, they requested it to be called a mobility element. And I think since then, Traffic and Safety Commission also is modifying their name to mobility.
Okay, so the, the other elements where they refer to the circulation element may need updating too.
That's correct.
Okay.
We're probably going to put it in parentheses on the title, like on the title page, circulation element, because that is what is.
Because all, all the maps are, you know, C E something and a lot of little details. So next question is, will this presentation, can you email it out to the planning commissioners? In case Susan missed anything, that way she'll get it. And then I assume it's also on the web, the mobility element website page.
Yeah, we, we'll email the PDF, but yes, it is available because we did give this presentation to the Traffic and Safety Commission, so there, it is available currently on the webpage.
Okay, great. Okay, any? See, or Susan, do you have any questions?
Uh, no, I was able, I'm able to view it and it looked great and I'm really excited about all of the mobility options in the update, so it looks wonderful to me. Thanks.
Great.
All right.
With that, there's enough, no other questions. We'll move on to changes to the agenda. Are there any changes to the public, published agenda? I assume not. Okay, hearing none. We'll then move on to consent calendar. Uh, the first item, first up are the items on the consent calendar. Uh, this item is considered non controversial or routine in nature. All consent calendar items are typically voted on collectively. In this case, there's only one in a single motion without any staff presentation, public comment or commission deliberation. However, if a member of the public or commission or commissioner has requested the consent item be heard, the item will be removed from. The consent calendar and be given individual hearings, hearing. Items removed from the consent calendar will be heard individually immediately after the consent calendar vote. Tonight's consent calendar is made up of one item. Item seven A, the Papian remodel continuance. This is a project multi zero zero three four eight six dash twenty nineteen. This, this is a public hearing to request design review permit, coastal development permit to allow. For the demolition of an existing unit and the reconstruction of a new unit and associated improvements as part of an existing fiveplex project site. Tonight's action is to continue the item date certain to August fifth, uh, twenty twenty one, planning commission meeting. The project is located at two 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 Hermes Avenue in Lucadia. And Amanda, has anybody polled or wants to speak about item seven A?
No, Chair, we don't have any speakers on this item.
Okay, so I'll take a motion to pass the consent calendar if anybody wants to offer one up. Steve?
Make a motion that we approve the consent calendar.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, great. We have motion and a second. Uh, Mandy, Mandy, you're, you don't know, you're not operating the stuff normally. So how would you like us to vote for you? Show of hands or verbally?
I think that show of hands would be great.
Okay. So uh, I, all those in favor, you know, say aye or?
Aye.
And Susan?
Aye.
Aye, okay, so it sounds like it's a four zero uh vote.
Great, thank you.
There we go. So then we move on to tonight's regular agenda where we have one item. This is item nine A, Encinitas Boulevard Apartments can, um. It's a public hearing to consider a design review permit, density bonus and boundary adjustment to allow the demolition of existing single family homes. And accessory structures and construct a two hundred and seventy seven unit apartment development with, and I actually have an old here. Um, including a leasing and amenity space, private outdoor recreation space, signage grading and landscaping improvements. The project is located at two 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 zero and two 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 eight and two two three O Encinitas Boulevard in Allevonheim. And the first question, are there any disclosures? And I have one, I will be recusing myself from this, so I will actually drop from the meeting. And Kevin, as vice chair, will take over and chair the remainder of the meeting. So with that. You've got the reins there.
Thank you, Chair.
Okay, bye.
Um, I also have disclosures. I haven't met with anyone personally, but I've been receiving numerous emails on this subject. Um, I subscribe to. Pretty much every mailing list I can find in town and uh, the E R R D is one of them, so I have been following this case closely. Um, but uh. Honestly, I'm. I've received such a vast quantity of information on this that I feel I have no trouble managing this uh based on the evidence presented tonight. Anyone else? Well. This is my, I'll I'll make it up.
Yes, I have.
Steve?
I'll make a quick disclosure that I um, I know Tim Hutter, Tim Hutter, who is an attorney representing the client tonight. I um, I have not discussed this project with Tim and um, I have no problem making a impartial decision on this project.
Thank you. And Susan, nothing? So. We will, uh, before I move on, uh, we usually will move on to a staff report next, but uh, before I do, I'm gonna ask uh, staff, how many public speakers? Do we have on call tonight?
We have forty seven public speakers.
Forty seven public speakers, uh. At my discretion, I, I'm going to uh ask that we. Um, limit the discussion to two minutes per speaker as opposed to three. Um, this is within our, our discretion. I'm gonna ask uh, just for. A show of consensus from the rest of the people here. This is gonna be ninety minutes of discussion. Um, now I. Think I've read letters from most of the people who will be speaking tonight and uh, I'll just ask uh. Be kind if you know somebody ahead of you just said something that's pretty much what you're gonna say. Let's try and move this meeting on and uh, we'll do the right thing tonight. Um, and after that, uh, I just wanted to get that out. So if anyone is planning their speak can now have, plan on a two minute speech instead of a three. Um, with that, I'll move for to the staff report and I think uh. That will be given by Anna Cola Musi, our principal planner.
Thank you very much. Um, good evening, Vice Chair and Planning Commission members and members of the public. I'm Anna Cola Lucy and I'll be presenting the Encinitas Boulevard Apartments this evening. Just wanted to go ahead and start with the property boundaries highlighted yellow on the screen. Does everybody see my screen? Great, thank you. Now, the site is surrounded by single family residential, as you see on the north and then east and west, and then a commercial property to the south. These are just some images of the property, uh, not inclusive of everything, but the site has historically been vacant or and used by single family homes, one of which. Um, is used as an assisted care facility. The project site is a housing element site allocated to address the regional housing needs assessment for the city of Encinitas. It was referred to as site oh eight, also known as the Gaffin, Gaffney Goodson Property. As part of that housing element update, the project was rezoned to R thirty overlay zone. It's also located in the scenic visual corridor and special study overlay zones. The proposed applications include a request for density bonus, design review permit and boundary adjustment. Um, because the chair went over the project description, I'll just go ahead and leave the slide up um if needed, but I'll go ahead and skip that if that's okay. The city is required to review a project within the R thirty overlays in overlay zone by right. If it does not require a subdivision and includes twenty percent of the units affordable to lower income households, excluding density bonus units. Review by right means that the project cannot be required to obtain just a discretionary permit that would subject the project to review. Under the California Environmental Quality Act. The project is eligible for by right approval because it is located within the R thirty overlay zone. It does not require a subdivision and it provides twenty percent of the base density units, which is two hundred and five. Is their base density and they're providing forty one, which equates to the twenty percent as affordable housing lower income units. The project was reviewed against several state code sections, including the by right just discussed. Um, as well as the Housing Accountability Act and Density Bonus. It was reviewed against the R thirty zone development standards, the objective city design guidelines, the general plan and municipal code. The Housing Accountability Act applies to any housing development with two or more units. And contains provisions similar to those but with the by right projects. Um, most importantly, if the city denies or reduces the density of a project that conforms with all objective general plan zoning and subdivision standards, including designer view standards. It must find that the project would have a specific adverse impact upon the public health or safety. That cannot be mitigated unless the project is disapproved or the density is reduced. However, a project that does comply with objective standards may be denied or reduced in density. A housing project that receives a density bonus is considered to comply with objective standards. When reviewing some of the objective development standards, the project was found to be in compliance with setbacks, lot size, lot coverage, the facade wall plane requirement. Maximum average unit size, combination, private, common, open space, landscaping and applicable standards identified in the high density standard section. Other standards will be described in the concession and waiver discussions later in the presentation. The site proposes its primary vehicular access off McCain Lane via Encinitas Boulevard. Two emergency access driveways are provided to accommodate the one hundred and fifty foot host pool requirements off Rancho Santa Fe. And you'll see on the screen, the two emergency are in green and then the purple, hopefully they're showing up the same color for you all there. Um, it was determined that the proposed project didn't meet fire requirements for the site. And many comments from the public included concerns for safety in the event of a wildfire. Um, in the event of a wildfire, the residents of this development would exit from McCain Lane entrance onto Encinitas Boulevard. Uh, we do have Fire Chief Stein and Fire Marshal Schmidt to answer questions if needed. The local transportation analysis was prepared by Chen Ryan. The analysis concluded that the project would generate one thousand six hundred and ninety eight total new average daily trips with a hundred thirty six trips during the A M. Peak hour. And a hundred and fifty three trips during the P M. Peak hour. As part of the project, the travel, traffic signals proposed at McCain Lane Candy Lane and Encinitas Boulevard intersection. They'll be restriping along a section of Encinitas Boulevard and signal retiming optimization at Encinitas Boulevard, Rancho Santa Fe Road, Manchester Avenue intersection. The level of service analysis concluded that the project will be at an acceptable level pursuant to the general plan policies one point two and one point three described in the staff report. The report concluded that Encinitas Boulevard via Cerito to McCain Lane Road segment. And McCain Lane to Rancho Santa Fe Road, Manchester Avenue Road segment would result in a level of service C or better. It also concluded that the peak hour intersection level of service with the project at Candy, Kane Lane. McCain Lane and Encinitas Boulevard would result in a level of service B in the A M. And level of service A in the P M. Rancho Santa Fe Road, Manchester Avenue and Encinitas Boulevard, South Rancho Santa Fe Road intersections result in a level of service D for both A M. And P M. Peak hours. We do have Abraham Bandigan from our city traffic engineer also available for questions as well as Chen Ryan. As mentioned, the project site is located within the special study overlay zone. And in Encinitas Municipal Code thirty point thirty four oh three O states that hillside inland bluff overlay zone regulations. Shall apply to all areas within special study overlay where site specific analysis indicates that ten percent or more of the area of a parcel of land exceeds twenty five percent slope. A site specific analysis was conducted and determined that nine point two nine percent of the site contains natural steep slopes. The diagram identifies areas of manufactured slope as a result of prior construction. Staff reviewed all manufactured, fashioned slopes, areas and are in agreement with the areas identified as manufactured. The project site is located within the scenic visual corridor overlay zone. However, there are no identified significant view sheds, significant highways, historic view sheds or disappointments within the resource management element of the general plan identified. The applicant proposes to consolidate four underlying legal lots into one. And the resulting lot does meet the required net lot area and dimensions for the R thirty overlay zone. And there were in regards to inquiries related to parcel two B, it's these, this upper right hand corner here parcel. Um, we received public comments and inquiries regarding this parcel. Um, it is an existing legal lot. Um, the applicant chose to remove the parcel from the project that was originally included. Um, and it, they removed it in order to exempt the project from the hillside and the bluff overlay zone. When parcel two B was included as part of the project, it was not part of the lot consolidation originally. And it was not proposed for any development. It was just left in its state the way it is. And so the applicant um removed it. Under state density bonus law, the applicant may request a thirty five percent density bonus for a total of two hundred and seventy seven units. Based upon the percentage of affordable units provided, the applicant is eligible to request two concessions and they have requested those two. In addition to those concessions, three waivers are being requested. And the project also utilizes the reduction of parking in state law, which requires three hundred and ninety spaces and the project proposes four hundred and seventy two spaces. As mentioned through density bonus, the applicant is allowed the two concessions and pursuant to, one of them is pursuant to municipal code section twenty three point thirty six point one two O. Where it states owners shall underground all existing utility distribution facilities. Including cable television lines along the frontage of the owner's property. Existing utility lines run along the western property line and cross Encinitas Boulevard as well as along a portion of the northwestern property line. For the second concession, Encinitas Municipal Code thirty sixteen oh one oh D seven. A masonry wall six feet in height from the highest finished grade may be required along the project's rear and side property lines. Unless the property line separate two higher density residential projects. Since the property abuts single family residential developments to the west and north, a six foot masonry wall is required. Density bonus law states that the city may require reasonable documentation to establish eligibility for the concession or incentive. Or to demonstrate that the incentive or concession meets the definition set forth in subdivision K. The applicant provided the reasonable documentation and the city requested the services of K M A to determine compliance with the density bonus findings. At this time, I do have um, K M A, we have Paul Mara, um, who is going to discuss their findings in the next slide, so I'm gonna pass the presentation on to him.
Thank you, Anna, and good evening, Vice Chair Doyle and members of the Planning Commission, Paul Mara with Kaiser Marston Associates. Um, and thanks in advance to city staff for assisting with sharing the slides. Uh, we were engaged to prepare a density bonus analysis for the requested concessions. Uh, and the the purpose was to review the development application and determine if the requested concessions will result in identifiable and actual cost reductions. To provide for affordable rents pursuant to government codes six, section six, five, nine, one, five. Uh, and Anna's already described the density bonus and the concessions, uh, so I'll just go on to the next slide. So our method of analysis when we look at uh, a density bonus project inclusive of concessions is to prepare financial performance analyses for both. A base case project and the proposed project. And the base case project is defined as a zoning compliant project with a hundred and sixty marketed rate units. Um, based on the original uh, site areas and I'll talk about that in a moment. And no affordable units in order to measure the full economic impact of the affordable units when we look at the proposed project. Uh, the proposed project as originally submitted by the applicant was two hundred and eighty three apartments with forty two units rented at low income rents. So we prepare financial performers for each of these scenarios, uh, preparing estimates of development costs, operating income and expenses. And developer return on investment, which is defined as the stabilized net operating income for the apartments divided by the total. Project investment, the total project cost. Uh, we concluded that the base case project generated a return on investment on the order of five point three five percent. And applied that return as the threshold return for the proposed project. Um, comparing these two performers indicates the financial benefits created by the density bonus inclusive of the requested concessions. And enables us to compare that to the required low income units. You can go to the next slide, please. Uh, so under the government code section, we, we look at two tests. The first test is to determine if the proposed concession results in identifiable and actual cost reductions. And the second test is to compare the net cost for the affordable units to the benefits generated by the density bonus and and concessions. Uh, in the first test, the estimated development costs for the proposed project are approximately five percent lower than the base case project on a per unit basis. Uh, so we conclude that provision of the concessions does result in identifiable and actual cost reductions. And for the second test, we draw a comparison between the impact to provide the forty two, uh, which will become forty one in another slide. Uh, low income units, which we measured as a a one time impact of nine point four million. Relative to the value of the density bonus and concessions, which we measured at ten point two million. So we concluded that the value of the density bonus and concession slightly exceeds the cost to provide the low income units. Um, it's a little cut off there, but zero point seven percent of of our estimated development budget. Uh, but definitely less than one percent of the development budget, so relatively insignificant. So on that basis, we concluded that the city should allow the requested concessions and I can go to the next. And I can go to the next slide. Thank you. The developer subsequently subsequently revised the development application as was described to you. There were changes in the gross site area and the net site area figures resulting in a reduction in unit count for the project and one fewer affordable unit, but all units averaging slightly larger. And then go to the last slide. And as we reviewed those changes to consider the impacts on our prior financial analysis and the slide looks like it got chopped, I can summarize our conclusions. The base case scenario becomes more feasible due to the larger net side area and the increased unit count. And recall that the base case project is the one that sets our return on investment threshold for the proposed project. So the base case project is performs better, becomes more feasible. But the proposed project becomes somewhat less feasible because it lost unit count. And there's while there's corresponding impacts on costs, cost per square foot would tend to decline for larger units. But so would rent per square foot would decline and operating expenses would likely increase on a per unit basis. So these changes net-net would tend to make the proposed project less feasible than it was before when compared to the the base case project. And therefore conclusions remain the same that the the city should allow the concessions. So that's a brief summary of our analysis. Be happy to respond to questions later and pass it back to Anna at this time. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much, Paul. Appreciate it. So I'm going to move on to the waivers section. And the first of the three waivers that were requested is to exceed height to allow maximum height of sixty-one and a half feet where thirty-nine feet is required. The second is to allow a five-story structure and in some locations, six stories where three is the standard. And lastly, to reduce the amount of private storage per units where one hundred and nineteen storage units are provided and two hundred and seventy-seven would be required. This table here just demonstrates the waivers the city of Encinitas has issued for non-R thirty sites throughout the years in the first column. And you'll you'll see the variety there that that we have approved. And then the second column identifies so far at this time, we have not approved any waivers for our thirty sites. Just because projects that requested waivers have not gone through yet. And then the third column lists examples of requested waivers for our thirty sites currently in process. So just kind of wanted to give a little snapshot of that. So as outlined in the staff report and pursuant to state law, city, the city requested services from RRM to determine if the waivers are required in order to develop the density proposed. So at this time, I'm going to pass on the presentation to Scott Martin and Matthew Addison from RRM, who will discuss their findings. I'm going to go ahead and stop share and Scott was going to share his screen.
Thank you so much. Can everybody hear me all right?
Yes, we can.
Wonderful. And can you see my screen okay as well? I'm sorry, I'm an architect and I asked Anna if it was okay because I like to draw and stuff. So I wanted to be able to share my screen myself, just just so I can do little markups and scribbles and at least that way you won't fall asleep. I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. I know this is a delicate one and we're excited to to offer some services. We we had, we quite enjoyed this project. We think it was a very creative solution. So we looked at what the applicant originally proposed. You know, there's so much work and dedication into this. Sometimes it's hard to try to pick it apart in a matter of months what others have done in a matter of years. So. But we did really appreciate sort of the the general circulation, the grading concepts that have gone into here and sort of the the layout in which, you know, you maximize views, gained quite a bit of open space. This is what I I refer to as a wrap product. I'm sorry if I use a little bit of jargon in this, but this is a parking structure with a apartment building wrapped around it. That that just sort of defines how the, from a building code standpoint and separation standpoint and others, how the project comes together. It does some great things about screening and and others. But that's not really why I'm here tonight. The the city engaged RRM to review, as Anna mentioned, the three waivers being requested. Those three waivers are height, stories and unit storage. So when we looked at this months ago, it it's not a matter of whether or not RRM likes the project or thinks it looks beautiful or would would enjoy it being there. It's really a matter of whether or not you could do a similar project with the same stuff without asking for these waivers. Whether that there's a physical preclusion that is saying you can't get it under the height or in the story requirement or you just can't fulfill all the units or your unit storage. So that that's what we were charged with looking at. I want to go a little bit into the process of what we did. As I said, we just, we had a couple of months to look at this. Our first thing was to try to recreate what the applicant had done. The so this is, this is the applicant's project. Here's that same parking structure. We simplified the overall massing as the things we're talking about are are based on the overall square footages and heights or stories. We didn't need things like windows. We didn't, we didn't add details to the same level as what the applicant has. But here's your parking area. You can see there's, there's these great fingers that allow both open space and units to come out, main circulation core. We we looked at this. We also cut a section. That's like taking a slice through the project so we could look at stories and how they stacked upon each other. It's important in in municipal code how stories are defined and we'll get into that a little bit bit later. But basically, we wanted to bring this to a level playing field of something we could analyze, put into a computer program and now analyze the same level of detail from a massing and square footage standpoint. When you look at their proposed project in three dimensions, this is so sort of what you see, the highest mass here in the center by parking structure and it kind of stepping down towards Rancho Santa Fe, stepping down towards the fire access road. You can see some of the rough grading and open space concepts the applicant had applied. So so that was sort of our base model, our starting point. From there, we also were shared an alternative done by the applicant, I believe, that looked at as required by state law that looks at another way to achieve a similar similar program. The alternative provided was about the same level of detail that we provided, but I really thought it had some merit and maybe wasn't fully explored enough. This is, I call this a wrap with a donut. And I know that's a very technical architect term, but the the goal here is to provide a courtyard area that your units can wrap around. And we kind of built upon that area. I'm calling this scenario one. This is RRM's first study at how you might be able to achieve some of some of the same overall project goals where footage, units, et cetera, and do it in a different way. As opposed to the the fingers with open space, this project moved all the units out towards the boundary, towards the edges of this, of the grading work being done as well as taking the parking structure and building and moving it slight slightly up the hill. As we tried to maintain the same grading, but what what this does is allows the project to reach out further. You can see open space is internalized to the project here that I think there's some advantages to that. That's really not what we're discussing tonight, but there's some security and and other things. What it does do is present more of a public face along Rancho Santa Fe and gives me more building area for units to go. That's really what we are trying to do. As a result of trying to bring the project down in overall height and stories, we wanted to go out to allow for that same square footage. This is a similar section. Now it's cutting right through a courtyard. So what you see here is a courtyard and there's there's building behind. But a similar section as to what was shown a couple of slides ago to see the difference. So as opposed to being, we're we're showing a very large wall right here on the street, similar to what the applicant showed. But we're taking these units up here and spreading them around the site. So we're taking advantage of of the larger footprint. What that results in is overall a smaller perceived height. And that's really what we are trying to get at. There was in our original report, there was clearly a an labeling error. This is what our diagram should have labeled. The report itself was accurate, but we said with without a height waiver or story waiver, that that is not correct. There is still a need even in this version and this scenario one massing that we did for a story waiver. I'm going to try to show you that in a little bit more detail. This shows that same three-dimensional massing and I'm just going to, I'm going to zoom into this portion of the building. And what you can see is there is a portion of common space that is partially underground, partially buried. Now, while we still meet the height, your height is calculated from from the slope next to the building. So you can still get three stories within here. You can get four stories here. But to get your height, you need to get part of it below ground. And that's, that's where we can meet the height requirement, but not meet the story requirement. So after some some analysis of how height was calculated and what stories the basements do define a story and and how that all comes to play, we believe that you could in scenario one, meet the height requirements, same program, not meet the story requirements. You'd exceeded by one, not by two or three, but just by one. And we we also found some opportunities for storage, additional unit storage like in the garage, in the parking structure and other places that that we think you could apply to to mitigate that that potential change. But overall, if you looked at the the applicant's proposed project versus our scenario one, we believe you can meet everything unchanged, unchanged units all until you come down to the stories where we believe you would need to ask for at least one waiver for a one-story addition. That's sort of the level that we did with our analysis. Happy to answer questions later on if they come up or talk more about the process.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate it. So I'm gonna, next, we had asked our legal counsel to just talk a little bit about the applicable state laws. So at this time, I do want to pass it on to Barbara Kouts.
Thank you Chair Doyle or Chair Doyle and the Planning Commission for letting, for having me. I wanted to talk a bit about the various laws applicable to the project which Anna outlined. In general, in the past four years, the state legislature has enacted a great many laws which are intended to increase housing production in the state. And one strategy that the legislature has adopted is to reduce the discretion that cities have in reviewing and approving housing developments such as this one. As the staff report described, the project is eligible for what is called by right approval, which ends up exempting the project from review under the California Environmental Quality Act. And the city's actions also have to conform with a state law called the Housing Accountability Act. These laws together limit the city's review to design review only. And the city can only deny or reduce the density of a project based on objective standards contained in the city's adopted plans, zoning ordinance and design standards. And objective standards are those that can be independently verified by reference to an external standard such as height. Everyone knows what thirty feet or sixty feet means, rather than relying on any kind of subjective judgment. And if the project conforms to all objective standards, the city may deny it or reduce the density only if it can demonstrate that there's a health or safety impact based on objective standards which are already in effect and show there's no way to mitigate the project without denying the project or reducing its density. On the other hand, if the project does not conform with the objective standards, the city may deny it or reduce the density. The project has requested a thirty-five percent density bonus, which the developer is entitled to under state law. And to accommodate the bonus, the developer has asked for three waivers of the city's objective standards. As the staff explained, the increase in height to sixty-one feet, an increase in the number of stories from three feet to five or six stories and one hundred and nineteen storage units rather than the two hundred and seventy-seven units required. This state law does not allow the city to apply any development standard to a project that would physically preclude a development with the density that the project is entitled to. In the past, the city has granted date waivers for many density bonus projects. City has approved over thirty density bonus projects. But as shown in the slide provided by the staff earlier, none have requested an increase in the number of stories or an increased height above thirty feet, even for projects that requested thirty-five percent bonuses like this project. The city's also processing applications for other projects on similar sites that have requested similar density bonus, but none have requested waivers for more than a one-story increase. Because the waivers requested for this project were so much greater than those requested or granted for other projects, the city retained the RRM group to determine if the project program could be accommodated without waivers or with fewer waivers. And as you've heard, RRM determined that the major features of the program could be retained with only a one-story waiver in some limited areas and that no height or storage waiver would be needed. The waivers are intended by state law to be granted only when a development standard physically precludes development of the density that the project's entitled to. And if the product development standard does not physically preclude the density, the project is not entitled to the waiver. The city invited the applicant on several occasions to explore modifications to the project that could result in no or fewer waivers. And the applicant and his representatives have asserted, actually it's asserted in another letter that you received today, that once a project is eligible for a density bonus, all requested waivers must be granted. And the city has no discretion to deny any waivers. In other words, the developer's position is that no development standards applied at all applied to a project once a project is eligible for a density bonus. And for instance, if the project had requested, had proposed a twelve-story building to accommodate the two hundred and seventy-seven units, the city would be required to approve that as well as the, as well as the six stories requested. We're familiar with the published case that the applicant cites and it does not go that far. The commission must make its decision based only on the evidence before it, which includes our M report, the applicant's density bonus report and response to the RRM report, all the information that was already submitted by the public and information submitted at the public hearing. Because there's substantial evidence that the waivers requested are not needed to a pro, to achieve the density, the staff has recommended that the project be denied since without the waivers, it doesn't conform with the city's objective standards for height, stories and storage. But if the commission, in its own weighing of the evidence disagrees with this conclusion and believes that the waivers are necessary to achieve the project density, then the staff has asked that the item be continued to your next meeting so that proper conditions of approval can be drafted. And with that, I'd be happy to answer your questions. I, we're, I'm just going to turn it back to Anna for now.
Thank you so much, Barbara. That's actually going to conclude the presentation. I just wanted to state based on the information, staff recommends the planning commission deny the waivers and the design review permit based upon the findings outlined in the draft resolution of denial. And separately, staff recommends And separately, staff recommends planning commission approve the boundary adjustment to consolidate the four lots into one based on the findings outlined in the draft resolution of approval. So this concludes staff's presentation and we're available for any questions.
Do any of the commissioners have questions, clarifications from staff? Before we move on to uh, public comments. Steve, nothing?
I do. I have a question for Barbara, I think, and who gets to define what what the project is? It seems to me in the RRM alternatives, they've reduced setbacks or reduced open space. And aren't those subjective decisions on how to configure the building? And um, so does, is, is the state law on the developer's side here that allows them to define how they would like the project to be?
It's not, what the state law says is that a city cannot apply uh, a development standard that would preclude a project with the density and the concessions that the project's entitled to. Here, the concessions really have no effect on the development standards other than, you know, other than the concessions themselves. So the issue is whether or not it physically precludes the density that the project um, that the project proposes. We would agree to some extent that, for instance, the city, the developer proposed, said, well, I could propose a project with three hundred square foot units. We would agree that that is not a reasonable um, interpretation of the density bonus law, that a project would have to be reduced to three hundred, uh, you know, to have a project with three hundred square foot units. On the other hand, uh, when the city talked to RRM, it asked it to incorporate as much of the developers' uh, program as possible. And in that sense, the the RRM approach, and it's, the city's not saying that the developer has to um, adopt the RRM approach. The issue is just, could the, could the project program largely be accommodated uh, with the same, looking for the same project square footage, uh, number of parking spaces, type of parking, uh, oh, you know, total quantity of open space as, as had been proposed by the developer. And in that, that showed that that, you know, in the RRM, the RRM program showed that it would be possible to accommodate the program, the developer's program without the height and without the heightened storage um, waivers and with only a one story waiver. So it's, you know, that was the, but the city is not saying that the RRM approach has to be adopted. It's just saying that it doesn't seem, you know, that we have substantial evidence that all of these waivers are not necessary to accommodate the developer's program.
Thank you. I, I have a follow up question, and this may be for um, the RRM architect. Uh, but when the alternate study was done and the storage space was added into the project, wh- where was that space before? I mean, were there blank, were there open spaces in the garage that did not have storage? Or how did they add that storage without reducing or removing some other program element that was in the project?
Uh, ju- just to clarify, through discussions with staff, um, and Roy, maybe you wanna, I, I know you found this in, in the uh, transportation standards. It appeared as if you could put storage in the parking structure underneath where the nose of the car wo- would go in. So when we looked at how much space was accommodated in that, it seemed like you could easily meet the deficit of storage that was being requested for because there's so many parking spaces in that structure. The commissioner, does that answer your question?
It, it does. I, I think you're saying you, you could do it over the hoods of the car.
Yeah, yeah, there's some really interesting product types. And it, there's even a diagram, and I, I believe it's your transportation standard that show where your car comes in the hood, and then there's a storage cabinet above that allows for kayak or whatever it is you mean.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Uh, Susan, do you have anything? You're not visible, so I'll ask. Susan's still here. I see us missing a commissioner. Did Susan Sheridan make it back online? It's first IT, I guess. It's hard to progress with just two planning commissioners present.
I'll offer to vote twice if you'd like.
Yeah, who wasn't have said vote early and vote often? Um, staff, any? Have we heard anything? I see IT's coming in right now.
Uh, right, we do not see her on there, and we're trying to get to the bottom of it right now.
Um, so question for Roy, I think, how do we progress here? We are right now.
Mr. Sheriff, perhaps maybe a, a five minute break uh, while we reach out to Commissioner Sheridan and find out her current status.
Okay, uh, we will uh, take a five minute break. It's uh, seven twenty-two, seven twenty-three. I'll see you back here, actually. Why don't we say seven thirty, just to nail it down? Okay, so, seven minute break, people. Welcome back, Susan. One minute. Still frozen. I'm reminded of when I, I called in to a meeting from Big Bear one, one week and uh, I couldn't, if I had to talk, I had to turn off my video. I could leave my video on while I watched and people would see my reactions. But then I turned it off every time I had to speak. Otherwise, I sounded like.
Yeah, I'm having technical difficulties for sure. But it's, uh, I'm connected again, so we'll try.
And you sound crystal clear right now. So cross my fingers on that.
Yeah, my video is off. I guess I have to leave the video off. I think that's the key.
It's all right, it's uh, feel free to speak up. And that's how I'll know, and if I, I'll, I'll call you out if I feel we're, we're neglecting you.
Hey, hey, can I say something? Hey, Susan, you can also call in with the number that's on the link.
Yeah, we'll try this to see how it goes. For some reason, the, my phone battery went to zero, and it shouldn't have it. It's plugged in, so I'm not really sure what happened. But uh, but now it's charging, so it should be okay.
Cool, well, welcome back. We have all three commissioners here. I'm gonna call the session back in. I think we were in a question status here, uh, Susan, since I've got you here and I can hear you. Do you have any questions from staff? Clarifications on what's been presented so far?
Well, I do, I do um, think that one story um, is a good recommendation in terms of waivers rather than sixty-one feet high. I think it's more um, line with our city's past record. But do, are we um, is that the main basis? Um, the main thing? Is there, I, I may have missed the very end of that presentation. Was there anything beyond that? I saw Barbara speaking, and then after that, I was having some trouble. So was there anything I missed after that?
Um, probably, but probably nothing. You, you sat through most of the process. Uh, Barbara, did you get any of the questions that Steve was asking? Why don't I ask a follow up question of Barbara?
No, I think, I, what she was saying, yeah.
Yeah, I, I think, I don't think you've missed anything critical. Um, I have a question for Barbara if I could. Um, now, this has to do more with a procedural thing. So we are sitting right now, correct me if I'm wrong, in a quasi judicial proceeding, which means that my understanding is uh, we are basically looking at the evid- the evidence that's presented tonight is the evidence that we're considering.
And yeah, I mean, the evidence presented tonight, which includes the voluminous correspondence you've received, the staff report and every, everything in front of you, yes.
So this is a, now, I'm looking at the state density bonus losses. Uh, we can't apply any development standard that will have the effect of physically pre- precluding a project. And uh, so the, one of the, the evidence submitted tonight is the piece from our, our M design, which seems to indicate that it's not physically precluded. So I just wanna be clear that I understand this. And that is, does seem to be uh, so we have proof right now. It seems that it's not physically precluded. That's just uh, or that it's, we have evidence submitted that seems to indicate that. Is that correct?
Right, it, the issue isn't proof here. It's uh, whether there's substantial evidence before you. I mean, the applicant has also uh, you know, presented a rebuttal, if you like, to the RRM report and um, some of the res- some of the correspondence you received has provided uh, supporting evidence for the RRM conclusion. So your role tonight is to weigh, you know, that evidence and decide whether there's substantial evidence. Um, whether there's uh, substantial evidence that the project would be physically precluded if you did not grant the waivers.
So that, that was my question.
Project with the density would be physically precluded, yeah.
Um, do we have anyone else with questions? I mean, the, the presentation so far seems pretty complete to me.
No questions here.
I have another question um, for Barbara. So should we, uh, if we should, if we did approve um, their request, their waiver request, would it be setting a precedent for other project approval requests of a similar nature?
I think to uh, I think, you know, our view is that the basis for granting the request would be that you avoid the evidence and you believe that the project would be physically precluded with the density unless the waivers are granted. Um, I would be very hesitant. I think it would be problematic to accept the analysis presented by the applicant essentially states that the, that once a project qualifies for a density bonus, all waivers must be granted. Um, that's, that's what's in the correspondence you received. Um, that I think is, is quite problematic. But of course, each project, you weigh the evidence based on what's before you, and you could disagree with the staff recommendation if you wished.
Thanks, Jess. So it appears to me that what you're Thanks, Jess. So it appears to me that what you're saying is that. We have have. Evident that the waiver is not a requirement for achieving the density that designed. With lesser height.
Yes, you have, you know, we consider the RRM report and some of the other evidence you've received is providing substantial evidence that the. That the project would with the density, that the density that the project is allowed would not be precluded. If you, you know, that all the waivers are not necessary to achieve that density. On the other hand, as I've said, you've also received contrary evidence could reach an alternative conclusion.
Thank you. You're muted.
Kevin, you're muted. Sorry.
Oh, do you mute yourself again?
I accidentally muted you again, Kevin, trying to unmute you.
This is why Bruce leaves it on all the time. I'd like to move on to a public comment, I believe. No, not right. What am I missing?
The applicant's presentation?
Oh, the applicant's presentation. Geez, please. Excuse me. I will move on. The applicant will will grant you, I think, 10 minutes is is. Typical. Mr. Goodson, you have the floor.
If you go to show windows.
Good evening, commissioners. Chair and Mr. Doyle, appreciate all your time that you've put into reviewing our project and your time this evening. And I appreciate all the staff time that has gone into evaluating our project over the last two plus years. My name is Randy Goodson, and I am the applicant for Encinitas Boulevard Apartments. Next slide, please. Not to read everything that is on the slide. You can read the slide. But as you know, the project is zoned R30, which allows for multifamily development at a base density of 30 DU per acre. The site, as shown, is 6.83 acres, resulting in a base density of 205 units. And through the use of the California State Density Bonus Law, by providing onsite affordable housing, the maximum bonus is up to 50% or up to 308 units by right, per the law and the zoning for this site. And so I just want to point out that we are not maximizing the units that we can zone for this site. We are at 277 units. And the reason we stayed at 277 units was because we did not want to add an additional story to the project. And a lot of people have thought in some cases, I think part of the staff report indicated that we have maximized the development. We have not done that. As the staff report says, 41 of the units we provided are low income units, rent restricted for 55 years. And another important factor is the project is the only project in the city of Encinitas that falls outside the coastal zone. So every other project that the city has evaluated for. That may have otherwise included height or story waivers were all in the coastal zone. And the other projects that are zoned, every other site zoned R30 is in the coastal zone, which is a different constraint. Unrelated to. Not subordinate to state laws. So that's a really important consideration. And as it goes to, if if there was, which I know there won't be a consideration for precedent. There could not be any precedent because this is the only site the city will be considering that is outside of the coastal zone. And again, as mentioned by RRM, this is a wrap design where the building wraps around the parking garage. And so the parking garage is hidden from view with the 472 parking stalls. The next slide, please. Significant features are Rancho Santa Fe Road will be improved to city standards for half width in accordance with all the criteria established in this city's street design manual, including street parking and sidewalks. Large setbacks from the property lines, more significant setbacks than are shown in the RRM concept, which I'll get to in a moment. And the project has extensive landscaping in a vast amount of open space, much greater than could possibly be provided in the RRM analysis, as well as the landscape buffers. The community provides 2.1 acres of onsite private and common open space. Onsite amenities for residents include a dog park, dog spa, resident garden, outdoor play areas, fruit orchard, barbecues, patio, pool, fitness center, and lawn and game areas. Next slide, please. Here are a lot of images to show the photo inspiration, classic farm, modern Rancho Santa Fe, a Lippin Heine inspired. Next slide, please. So you can see the quality of the project that we are. Hoping to bring to the community. Next slide, please. As staff mentioned, the entrance to the project is off of McCain Lane at Encinitas Boulevard. And that's the access that leads to the leasing office. That is the only access that will be allowed that our future residents will be able to use. The access mentioned off of Rancho Santa Fe Road, some of the red arrows at the bottom are gated emergency access only. The emergency vehicle access. Is well, we limited to the emergency service providers, the police and fire. And amenities are located on top of the parking structure as well. The the pool terrace and whatnot is on top of the parking structure. Slide next slide, please. Here you see the elevation along Rancho Santa Fe Road significantly different from what RRM mentioned, where you have the fingers of the project coming towards Rancho Santa Fe Road. And you can also see in the dashed line there, the existing topography. So you see where the buildings will sit relative to the existing topography. We think this allows for maximum light into the units and creates a more open building. And it significantly breaks up the massing along Rancho Santa Fe Road, making the project appear that there are smaller buildings toward the road, not one long building. Next slide, please. The here is a side elevation. You can see again, the dash line shows the existing grade. And so you can see where the building sits relative to the existing grade. And this maintains that no part of the actual building is more than three or four stories on grade. The project is two individual buildings separated by the parking garage. Next slide, please. Here we're showing the renderings. The park-like amenities are provided for residents to relax, enjoy in those fingers in between the portions of the building that bring the light that also RRM referenced. Some of them will have fireplaces, barbecues, and seating area. Next slide, please. And here's a resident, just just more resident images. In the interest of time, please advance the slide. Again. 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 This brings us to the RRM study. It's really important to understand that the RRM study. Is. Trying to indicate that this same number of square footage can be built in a store in a building that it has lower height, lower stories, the same open space, more storage. But there are no measurements shown on the RRM exhibits. So we don't know how they can make that determination. And you know, Commissioner Dalton made, you know, great points or asked really great questions that it'd be great for there to be follow up. You know, as it relates to how can the project exceed height but not exceed? The. Pardon me, exceed stories but not exceed height. The the two are very, very connected. And if you look at the images that are provided by RRM, they showed an area of three stories, but in the background, you see another two stories behind that that is the parking structure. And one of the important things that's occurring here is that because of the short period of time that RRM had to look at this project, there's probably a lot less iteration with RRM and the city staff because RRM is not being held to the same standard of how height is measured by city staff as directed by city staff, where there's been extensive correspondence with us and our consultants. So we are applying a different measurement that is. We think it's a unique way of interpreting the written words in the city code, but nonetheless, we even we've applied the measurement of height and stories based upon how staff has directed us. And we think that's not consistent with how RRM has been calculating the height for sure. We think that RRM's report very clearly supports that there is an a requirement for a waiver for height, for stories, and for storage. I want to talk about storage a little bit because. RRM's proposal is for storage to go in the parking garage in front of the parking spaces. We discussed that with staff. But we have a fully designed project. We know of all the infrastructure and utilities that are running in the parking structure along and in front of the parking stalls that precludes putting in storage in those locations. We told staff that when the project is completed, we will look for every opportunity in the parking structure where it is not precluded by the infrastructure to put in additional storage. But what is presented is what we are absolutely committing to in creating storage spaces. So you know, you know, RRM just doesn't have that level of knowledge because of their, you know, very truncated design of the project. But we agree that we could potentially put storage there. But we have a lot of infrastructure that goes into the parking garage.
Just me, Randy, we're coming up on 10 minutes. If you could, you're going to get another chance after a public comment, but.
Let me just end right there and please.
It's an important project.
I just need one minute for our attorney, Tim Hutter, to talk about the how the laws applied to waivers because it's really, really important for you to hear from us. Tim Hutter, please.
Can everybody hear me? Giving a lawyer one minute is a difficult thing, but I'll do my best. As many in the audience know, and certainly the planning commission for density bonus applications, findings to deny incentives and waivers are intentionally difficult, requiring evidence of specific adverse impacts based on objective standards consistent with the definition from the Housing Accountability Act. Instead, project and density bonus opponents in the city have shifted their efforts to impose non-statutory burdens on the qualification for incentives and waivers. With regard to waivers, this is an effort to demonstrate that that particular development standards do not physically preclude construction because it could be possible for a different project to be built, even with the same number of units. You may recognize this as a new variation on an old theme. Developers should just build smaller units, smaller homes, lower that ceiling height, cut back on the open space, take away the pool, or remove some other amenity from the project. Despite clear case law dictating that a qualifying BBL project is eligible for waivers, the city attempts to require project applicants to study so-called project alternatives. The same requirement was incorporated into the density bonus ordinance known as 2020-09. And HCD clearly told the city in a letter dated March 25th that such a requirement violates state law that the only project that should be analyzed for eligibility for waivers is the project proposed by the applicant. The city council thus decided on the basis of that instruction from HCD to repeal ordinance 2020-09. Despite that history and direction, staff's recommendation this evening is to deny the project based on the analysis of a purported alternative from RRM design known as scenario one. Unfortunately, due to some confusion in RRM's first memorandum, titles that have now been acknowledged to be outright incorrect, some including perhaps you, Mr. Doyle, may be operating under the misunderstanding that RRM scenario one proves that a different project could be built at the densities proposed by the applicant while complying with all applicable development standards. That's simply not true, and it's not what is being presented to you by RRM. Among many other problems identified in our by our consultant team and in attachments to my letter dated today and last month, even RRM admits that the city's story requirement would physically preclude construction of scenario one. And even that project would therefore require at least one waiver to allow its construction. They also acknowledge.
Wrap it up, please.
Sure. They also acknowledge that no effort was made to see that whether this design would comply with the city's most basic design requirements, how it would interact with neighbors, and they contend that this is a preliminary analysis focused only on storage, height, and waivers. We urge you today to follow state law and consider the project that you have before you today. As a reminder, the purpose of state density bonus law is to encourage market rate developers to include affordable housing in a project that will bring forth both affordable and market rate housing without necessity for monetary subsidies from cities like Encinitas. Subjecting projects to extra requirements and costs create even larger burdens on housing production, all in the midst of a housing crisis. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter.
On a pardon me, Commissioner Doyle, could you just put up the last? There was one more slide on the presentation that I was trying to get advanced.
Is this the one? This is the one?
That's the one. We really hope that the commissioners would ask RRM about this slide where you can see us counting the stories that they show in their exhibit. Because it's really important to see that they're showing seven stories and to talk to staff about how you can possibly measure that without a waiver of of height.
Well, I've taken a screen cap of this. We will discuss this. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Okay. Moving on. Anna, am I correct that we are ready for public comments?
I believe there was question. If there's questions.
Questions of the applicant. Hearing none. I'm gonna ask.
Yes.
Yes.
I do have a question.
Far out. Thank you. Floor is yours.
Okay, the problem I see here. The problem I see here for the applicant is that they want more information from from the feasibility that RRM RRM has performed. And I think they should have that information. I think that would be great if we have more details from RRM to help all of us see what they're saying and make. And to the public about the project. So maybe we do need more details. And so that's my feedback to the applicant.
Fair enough. Mr. Martin, do you want to respond to that? Or is this proper? Honestly, Roy, I'm uncertain where we are with public comments.
What I would suggest is to move forward with public comments. And then while the applicant to provide a rebuttal and then the staff will respond to questions from both or from the the commission after the public testimony is given.
And I think during our deliberation, whether I've got, if I need to open public comment for asking questions of people, we will do that. I feel that's probably going to be required. For public comment, I want to use the same format. I want to make sure we're announcing like who's coming up after.
Okay.
Presentation.
Efficiently through this.
Yeah, I'm just gonna unmute them all. All right, Kevin, we're gonna unmute everybody who's together in a group that's going first and they have a. Sort of. Presentation with.
We have 47 speakers, so I will go ahead with. Chuck Weber first, followed by Denny Neville. And just to confirm, I'm going to set a timer for two minutes for each speaker.
Sounds great. Let's see how this works.
I'll see if Chuck, maybe he called in.
We're trying to find Charles Weber on the Zoom right now.
John Weber.
Is it John? Is it John?
It is. Who do we have online now? I see Denny and John.
So right now, John Weber.
John.
John Weber, you can go ahead and begin when ready. You can unmute yourself if you muted.
He's unmuted.
I'm having some issues with my connection.
We hear you now, but so you may want to turn the volume down if you're watching.
John, if you can hear me, are you watching this on YouTube or one of the other channels? I think that allows for feedback.
I can hear you now.
Yes, we can. Actually, no, I'll take that back. Can't really make out what you're saying. This could be a long hour and a half.
Maybe we could move to the next speaker and come back to John.
Okay. So we're just going to go ahead and skip over that group and we will move on to Kevin Gunderson, followed by Casey Carter, excuse me, Casey Carter.
Well, this is Casey. Do you want me to go?
Let's say go for it.
Sure.
Okay, painful already. I'll go. I'm a longstanding resident since the 80s in Leavenheim. And Leavenheim has a longstanding dark skies policy that is critical. The critical foundation and primary cornerstone of the neighborhood was established back in the 1800s. And this policy prohibits streetlights, sport court lights, parking lot lights and other forms of light pollution. And the Goodson Project is in direct violation of this policy. This light pollution is going to be caused from all kinds of lighting involved with this project, such as the parking light, the sport court lights, the increased headlights from the cars entering and exiting the project, the ground lighting, and the proposed streetlights on Rancho Santa Fe Road are also violations of this policy. The policy has been in effect a long time before Mr. Goodson was born. There is no law or policy or regulation that supersedes this dark skies policy. And we ask that you do not allow this project to be built as it's going to be destroying our night sky. This project is also too large and too dense for the lot size. And it is like putting an elephant on a thimble. Its elevation is too high. And as we've already discussed tonight, he's demanding waivers claiming that the city's three-story limit. It needs waivers for that to build more more levels, more stories. And it reaches 69 feet, which is nearly twice the 39-foot limit. And we already know that there were two professional design consultants hired not only by the city, but also Anthony did RRD Group. That say that a pollution can be
We'll need to move on to the next speaker.
If you could just wrap it up in a quick sentence, we'll move on to the next. Sorry for the rushing. Casey, are you still there?
Yeah, I'm there. Just the two things that I would just finish with are that the Goodson Project is also adding to the congestion and noise in the neighborhood and compromises public safety. And you're adding too many new cars. And it's also deceitful to say that it's providing a bunch of low-income housing. It's studios and small one bedrooms that are being added at small percentage.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Who's next?
I'll try and mute the phone numbers.
We're going to try Kevin Gunderson again.
Let's see a phone.
We're not sure. Only the phone number shows, but if he's calling in, he needs to unmute.
Kevin, if you're here. Unmute. Let's
Hi, this is February. Can you hear me now?
All right.
Who's speaking?
It's this.
This is John, also known as Chuck Weber.
John Weber. We've got him online. Let's go.
So we'll go ahead with Chuck Weber, followed by Denny Neville.
Good evening, commissioners and staff. This is Chuck Weber. I'm a fire safety consultant in San Diego County. And I was approached by two community groups to speak on you about the potential issues of evacuation problems related to this project. This project, based on the findings of two reports I did for the community groups, indicates the project will produce a minimum 16% increase in the number of vehicles in the immediate area of the project. Secondly, a evacuation time of the parking structure based on the County of San Diego's Emergency Operation Plan evacuation formula will be approximately one hour and 53 minutes. A worst-case evacuation from the area, including the Leavenheim and the project site, will be approximately 400 or 45 and 40 vehicles using Rancho Santa Fe Road and Encinitas Encinitas Boulevard to egress the area, which results in a 25% increase in vehicles using the evacuation route. And then in some situations, increase the evacuation time by 67% for the area. Baseline of the safe required evacuation time for the area increases between 29 and 29%. Air modeling from a fire in the Santa Ana wind event starting 12, or excuse me, eight miles from the project can reach the project site within one hour, which means that the residents trying to evacuate the flame front on Rancho Santa Fe Road will be overrun by the fire before the best case evacuation time of four and a half hours is reached. I found that the evaluation of the project traffic study doesn't address emergency evacuation factors for either Encinitas Boulevard or Rancho Santa Fe Road that will feed evacuation traffic onto Encinitas Boulevard. No evacuation time data is shown in the project study. No mitigations are proposed to resolve the evacuation traffic on Encinitas Boulevard. The flame front that will potentially overrun the evacuation routes before the safe required exit time or evacuation time from the area will result in a large number of residents.
Your time is now.
Okay, thank you for this opportunity.
And next we have Denny Neville, followed by Hector Paratus.
Good evening. And thank you for the opportunity to address the commission. My name is Denny Neville. I live at 326 Colorado Ranch Road. My family and I have resided in Encinitas for 30 years, the last 27 in Leavenheim. My profession, I'm a retired deputy fire chief from the Rancho Santa Fe Fire Department, 39 years of fire service history. I've had firsthand experience in large brush and wildland fires impacting entire neighborhoods up and down the state. As Chuck reported in a a previous fire safety reporter he furnished. If the question with regard to this project is, does it affect public safety? Quite frankly, accepting a plan to place 277 apartments with over 400 vehicles attempting to access the same roadway as our 5,000-plus residents in order to escape a fire is absurd. As Mr. Weber explained in his report that by introducing an access point for these fleeing citizens at the top of the bottle stopper actually delays those further down the bottle. Logical thinking would indicate that even 10 cars he introduced at that point will have a negative impact on those further down the line. As the planning commissioner asked to review this project and its impact on safety. From the standpoint of evacuation alone, it produces potential catastrophic impacts on the community of Leavenheim and portions of Rancho Santa Fe. On behalf of our community, we request the commission to continue this item and require staff to meet with all concerned, the citizens, safety professionals, consultants, and subject matter experts to identify all impacts to public safety that this project will bring. As to the applicant's presentation and his improved safety measures for Rancho Santa Fe Road, please note these do not include in any way enhancement of the substandard evacuation opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next we have Hector Paratus. You don't see him online.
I'll try the number that's called in, but I don't see Hector on here.
The next speaker after word will be Amy McCord.
They're not in meeting.
So we'll have Amy McCord, followed by Jim Frost.
Unmute, Amy.
Hello, I'm sorry. I was not able to unmute until just now.
Good.
Before you start the timer, I would like to lodge, excuse me, I'd like to lodge a protest. You've said that your decision will be based on evidence you hear tonight, and yet you've cut all our experts' presentations by one-third while you allowed the applicant to go over his time by one-third. So that doesn't seem fair. And now I will start my presentation. I'd like to thank the previous speakers, even though we didn't get to hear Hector, for bringing this important updated fire analysis to the attention of city personnel. And thank you to the planning commissioners for your role in upholding the city's obligation to prioritize public safety. The city recently received a petition signed by more than 1,000 residents. The primary concern of the petitioners is the danger we face during wildfire evacuations. Leavenheim is in the CAL FIRE classified very high fire hazard zone, and many residents have lived through multiple fire evacuations. Adding any significant number of vehicles at this site, which is located at one of two main evacuation points, would make our dire situation even worse. Those who signed a petition request that the city deny any projects that put public safety at risk. The petitioners also urged the city to continue enforcing our municipal code, continue maintaining our longstanding design review criteria, and to to continue required mitigation of environmental impacts. We believe the Goodson Project constitutes a test case of the planning and governing tools our city is using to solve or not solve our need for affordable housing. Because this project exemplifies the most extreme application of the R30 density bonus and by right development rules, it will also test our city's ability to balance the sweeping privileges granted to developers against the measurable benefits or outright harm that this type of project delivers for our residents, especially for the less privileged amongst us. The following nine speakers will present factual findings that demonstrate a range of discrepancies and inadequacies of this proposed project. Thank you. Next slide and speaker, please.
Hi, this is Jim Frost. Can you all hear me there? Honorable Planning Commission and staff, thank you for your service. My name is Jim Frost. I'm a 35-year resident of Encinitas. I live on Avenue to Esperanza, which is the cul-de-sac that borders the Goodson Project on McCain Lane to the west. There are eight, are our two lots with eight homes. Due to our close proximity, I wrote Goodson a letter in mid-May 2018, and he responded on his plan to build a senior housing apartment complex that would not impact his neighbors. I was going to read the quote here, but it takes too much time. So he also made the same pitch to the council in April, and the housing element was soon adopted. When Encinitas Boulevard Apartments project was submitted to everyone's surprise, it morphed to a building project of over 500,000 square feet, the equivalent to footprint of five Home Depots and possibly the tallest structure in Encinitas. This mega project will destroy the rural character and historic community known as Leavenheim. The project's claim of by right allowed this project to bypass a full traffic study, greenhouse gas and other environmental studies that should be required. Living next to the narrow double-lane private road easement called McCain Lane, where cars will be waiting to egress at peak times in the AM, and we expect an opening day scenario to be a line of cars that is backed up in a queue at Encinitas Boulevard that will be waiting for several minutes to exit next to these homes. According to the local transportation, the local transportation analysis submitted by Chen and Ryan, 1,698 cars will come and go on this road every day. This is a car-centric product, project on the outskirts of Encinitas. Greenhouse gas, light, noise, pollution will impact nearby residents, including the children, of which the developer requested concessions to not build a simple six-foot wall or underground utilities that would have helped mitigate these health and safety impacts. When comparing the city's Phase 2 Rancho Santa Fe corridor study, which was actually dated pre-COVID-1, 22, 2020, to the Chen and Ryan study, some of the
At this point, your two minutes is up.
Okay, just they underestimated the traffic by 40%. Anyway, as you'll see in subsequent presentation, the Encinitas Boulevard Apartment project is filled with flaws and inconsistencies. We support staff in their determination to deny this project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next we have John Keating, followed by Suzanne Clausenstock.
Good evening. This is John Keating. Good evening, planning commissioners. I'm John Keating. I'm a licensed traffic engineer by the state of California. I reviewed the December 2020 traffic study prepared by Chen Ryan. It complies with the general requirements for a traffic study by the city of Encinitas, but the information presented is somewhat misleading. For example, it compares unsignaled level of service to signalized level of service. These are two completely different methodologies and are apples and oranges. The bottom line is that this 277 dwelling unit project is too big for a single access point, McCain Lane. The project impacts in the are in the traffic study are minimized by showing the existing level service and the post-project level service with mitigation. Doesn't show the project impacts before mitigation, kind of, you know, clouding the issue. The project does cause significant impacts. These impacts are mitigated, they say, by installing a traffic signal in McCain Lane and Encinitas Boulevard. The project traffic signal is 300 feet from Rancho Santa Fe Road intersection. This is too close by city intersection spacing standards by a factor of two. It will necessarily require Encinitas Boulevard traffic to stop to allow Project Act egress from McCain Lane. This is a bad design. To avoid this highly undesirable situation, the project needs to be reduced to 200 multifamily dwelling units or less to avoid the need for a traffic signal. Without a signal, project traffic would have to wait for an adequate gap and tend to enter Encinitas Boulevard. I'm not an anti-development person, just a right-sized development person. The right-sized development for this project is it needs to be reduced to about 200 dwelling units. The right-sized development for this project is it needs to be reduced to about 200 dwelling units or less. This will avoid significant impacts and avoid the need for mitigation measures. I'm available later for any further questions. Thank you.
Then we have Suzanne Clausenstock, followed by Dan Clausenstock.
Hello, my name's Suzanne Clausenstock, a 30-year resident. First, for clarification, the hillside inland bluff overlay zone applies when more than 10% of the site is greater than 25% grade. This is important because this zone has certain protections and restrictions which affect the buildable size of the project. Next slide, please. Next slide, thanks. This shows the applicant omitting an area in the moon shape in red we have known as natural. Next slide. Historic photos confirm this. He was made to reinstate that area, putting him into the protected overlay zone. Next slide. Consequently, parcel 2B was removed from his lot for the sole purpose of staying out of this restricted zone. Next slide. Importantly, the County of San Diego stated they have no evidence of Lot 2B. At less than an eighth of an acre, it is non-conforming, it is a non-conforming lot for either R2 or R-30 overlay zones. Next slide. Oops. Hang on, we don't, we don't need to keep going on slides. Another significant finding was the definition of natural grade as per Encinitas Municipal Code. This defines grading pre-1986 as natural grade. This historical aerial photo from 1982 with yellow arrows point to all homes graded and pre-existing on the proposed site and the neighbors to the north. All slopes greater than 25% of the entire site must then be factored into the calculations, again placing him well into the restricted area. We urge the city to follow their own code. Next slide. The last notable item was that his property boundary extends halfway into Rancho Santa Fe Road, as shown in red arrows. This road is calculated into his gross square footage. This information appears faulty since this is historic California State Road S10. Next slide. The applicant's plans have an easement known, note number nine, referencing Rancho Santa Fe Road. Yet, the County of San Diego Mapping Division, dealing with historic archived data, stated that the noted page in the deed book does not pertain to this parcel or easement. Even a city of Encinitas engineer was not able to find any documentation for this easement.
We ask-
City?
At this point.
We ask that the city get to the bottom of this prior to granting any rights to Rancho Santa Fe Road and before approving any lot-line adjustment. Thank you for your time. Next.
We, we now have Dan Clausenstock, followed by Ken Bilcel.
Good evening. This is Dan Clausenstock. I'm an engineer with NV5 Company, and we're asked to perform a slope analysis study for the area in question. We were asked to determine the percentage of the site sloped at greater than 25%. Compare the findings to the applicant's slope study and to determine if the study falls within the hillside inland bluff overlay zone where greater than 10% of the site area has a slope exceeding 25%. Go to the next slide. We used a method called LiDAR, which was the first step to survey the area. And that, in contrast to the photogrammetry, which was done by the applicant, and LiDAR is far more accurate, being able to get through vegetation using light beam, or photogrammetry requires interpolation of points and human interface. We developed the map with one-foot contours, and we determined where the slight, the slope succeeded 25% as well as 40%. And then calculated the area present on the map, and you can go on to the next slide. So this is the map we came up with. You saw a little bit of this in Suzanne's. And our company calculated that although the applicant came up with 9.3% of the site over 25% slope, we looked at our LiDAR data and came up with 11.39% actually is over 25% slope. The table depicts the areas. And you can see that the purple area was the area that the applicant determined to be with 25% or greater. And then the additional areas in green are the added areas NV5 found also to be over 25%. Next slide.
Just so you know, your two minutes is up at this point.
Okay, also, just in a nutshell here, we already mentioned that the natural grade definition by Encinitas Municipal Code talks about natural grades that were in place 1986 or sooner. This is a study that was using the actual Encinitas Municipal Code definition, and we found a much higher percentage, actually, up to 20, 22% nearly, being 25% or greater, based on the Encinitas definition.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ken Bilcel, followed by Soi Dan Palat.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Thank you. My name is John Bilcel. I'm a resident of Olivenheim. I'm an architecture professor, and I volunteer with the community group Encinitas RRD. So, next slide, please. Next, again, I need to pass quickly because time was reduced. Next, again. Next. Next slide, please. The applicant chose an architectural design type, which is popularly known as Texas Donuts. Housing units wrapped around a six-story parking structure. This is a car-centric development normally used in dense, very dense urban centers. Next, please. The plan creates long circulation corridors and poorly designed apartments. Next, please. The project is insensitive to natural environment. It leaves inadequate amount of natural soil and has a crushing effect on the neighborhood. The project sits on a 30-foot-high platform, hulking over Rancho Santa Fe Road, and Mr. Goodson's slide actually failed to show that. Next, please. So the total floor area is 526,000, which is, as Jim Frost said, five times a Home Depot. Next, please. This is an architectural elevation of the project seen from the intersection of Encinitas Boulevard and Rancho Santa Fe Road. It was produced by a professional urban design firm. The building reaches six floors and nearly twice, basically, the limit. So basically, to conclude, we agree with the staff that the project should be denied, but we also want to bring to your attention that the suggested boundary adjustment amounts to illegal subdivision. So we ask Planning Commission to direct the staff to obtain additional information, including an accurate slope analysis and compliance with inland bluff and scenic corridor. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Soi Dan Palat, followed by Juliana Maxim.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, commissioners and staff. My name is Soi Dan Palat. I'm a planning professional and I practice in zoning and land use planning. I was engaged by Encinitas residents for responsible development to do an alternative massing study. The goal of the analysis is to test the proposed, if the proposed density can be accommodated with Encinitas development standards. Next slide, please. A 3D model of the proposed development was created from available documentation, including grading and site plans, architectural elevations, and sections of the applicant. Next slide, please. Next, the model is converted to a massing diagram to demonstrate the gross floor area and massing configuration. In this image, all white areas represent the parts of the proposed massing that comply with Encinitas development standards. The red areas show potential infill spots that can be added to the proposed massing. Next slide, please. So this image shows what is kept from the proposed project versus what is added and what is removed. The massing scenario assumes parking to be configured underneath the residential footprints. It assumes no above-grade parking structure and opens up the central area as an open space with parking continuing underneath the open space. The yellow outlined areas shows the footprints of the proposed development. And again, the red-colored areas show potential infill spots that could be added to the massing to allocate for the lost floor area by reducing the floor heights to three stories throughout the development. Next slide, please. This image shows a reproduced version of the proposed development. And next slide, please. The same image is used to create a plan view of the alternate massing diagram, which is superimposed of the previous image that we looked at, showing the potential locations to add infill massing. Last slide, please. Next slide. And this table is taken from the proposed development plan set. A similar table is provided in here to show that the gross score footage of the proposed development and the alternate massing are in fact very close. Thank you for giving me opportunity to speak and do the presentation. Next presenter, please.
Thank you. Next we have Juliana Maxim, followed by Craig Sherman.
If I could pause before the next speaker comes in. Amanda, the screen share that we're seeing is cropping off the right-hand edge of the presentation. On your laptop, can, is there anything that can be done about that?
So it's on, on the, is there anything?
Is that, you can't see from your end? Um, well, I just see, like, in the last couple of slides, I've, I've captured a couple, the one with the chart. I see proposed development at 2, 2, 2, and then a half a zero, and I realize I'm missing the right and the bottom. So if you see where everyone's camera is, it would be specific to your end. You can see on the top right of the- No, no, I mean, I'm making it big and small. It's cropping the right side of the screen.
I would like to chime in on this as well. Our captions were missing, and the screen is cropped. So we would appreciate if you could adjust the PowerPoint presentation on your end so all our information could be, could be visible. All the previous slides contain technical information that failed to appear on the screen. Thank you.
Yeah, if you go back two slides, you'll, you'll see what- Thank you, everyone, for waiting.
Yeah. There was some notes on the side. Maybe on other slides. Yeah. Oh, I think I said-
Maybe just maybe change the magnification back off one step.
Maybe hit enable.
Yeah.
Bring back to the PowerPoint. Hit enable editing. Yeah, we'll see how this goes.
Maybe you could share something with us so we can at least see progress.
Wrong, wrong window. I can't see the-
Maybe if I can suggest the solution is to share a PDF of the PowerPoint presentation with the commissioners once we've done.
It's not my screen.
That was a good call. Thank you.
I'm happy to email the PDF as soon as our presentation is over.
Thank you. I would like to see that.
Yeah, sure.
Alright, I see all of that.
Better? Yes, this is the correct slide. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you, staff.
So I'm, I'd like to begin by saying that our experts' time was cut by a third, while the applicant's time was increased by a third. This project exists only because, at various moments, it has dangled in front of us the promise to help alleviate the affordable crisis in our city. Let's see how the applicant intends to house our working-class residents. The project proposes A1 units, deceptively called junior one-bedroom, although the bedroom has no windows and no walls. A1 units have no balcony. Less than six feet separate the cooking stove from the bed. A1 are small, dark, and cannot accommodate families. They exist only to satisfy the affordable unit count rather than the welfare of the tenants. All A1 units are designated as affordable, although at 80% AMI, the market rent and the affordable rent on these units will be almost the same. And I say this in energetic rebuttal to the KM findings. The remaining affordable units have been designed with similar stingingness. The B1 units are so narrow that one has to enter the bedroom through a closet. All combined affordable units amount to less than 10% of the project's total floor area. In response to Tim Hutter, it is the developer, not the city, who is squeezing the size of affordable units. All affordable units are placed in the least desirable locations, with least light and most noise, no views, and right next to the parking garage. Because of their inferior quality, rent on these units will be only marginally below average rents in Encinitas. In other words, the project will do almost nothing to reduce the housing cost burden in our city. Families larger than three people cannot rent these units, which means that this kind of housing is not only far from being affordable, it also discriminates based on family status, a protected category by law. Let's remember that density bonus and by right development laws were conceived to ensure the meaningful provision of affordable units. This project is a cynical distortion of their spirit. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Craig Sherman, followed by Dan Bond. Next, we have Craig Sherman, followed by Dan Bond. So we see him there, but he needs to unmute.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Hi. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Craig Sherman. I'm a land use and environmental attorney here in the county of San Diego. And I've been retained by Encinitas RRD to discuss some of the issues with regards to the project. We've presented some comment letters on a number of these subjects, which I'm sure you've had an opportunity to review. But I want to discuss the legal issue of by right development, which guides some of your discussion tonight. But the most important factor is, and we provided evidence that this, this project does not qualify for by right development. It does not qualify for by right development because of it's not providing the adequate number of affordable housing units, which requires that it be a percentage of the total number of units, not an abbreviated number. And you know that by comparing the by right statute that talks about a percentage of the number of total units when compared with other provisions, such as 65915, that talks about when you can exclude the units provided by the density bonus. So the absence of the language in the by right statute shows that it needs to be a percentage of the total units. They're, they're not in by right standards. Number two, by right isn't entitled to subdivision issues. You've heard before about lot to be. You heard staff say, well, it's, it's an existing legal lot. Well, it's part of an existing legal lot, but you're subdividing it out to make it a non-legal lot. So the result is a subdivision, and that's not exempted by by right development. Even if this project did qualify for by right development, there's still discretion with this planning commission. The discretion relates to those objector, objectives, and standards and measures, health and safety. Those items that have been identified for development to the site, such as in prior environmental documents, and they need to be considered. Their objective and salient measures and standards. And on the point that the applicant's counsel states that there's, there is no disability whatsoever to look at any other project other than as presented is an inaccurate statement as to what the duty is of the planning commission. And then lastly, the point by the applicant as well that the all grant, all waivers must be granted. And no factors can be looked at with regards to whether it's physically precluded, precluded and other viable alternatives. So we asked that the commission take a close look at those objectives and standards that were set forward for the site and apply those as alternative basis for denial of the project. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Dan Bond, followed by Gretchen Donovan.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. So I want to just emphasize a few points. One is I've sat in on many of these fire meetings as part of the community wildfire prevention plan team with Encinitas Fire Rep included. I've listened to Shane Lauderdale, the incident commander for the Paradise Fire, retired CAL FIRE commander. Compare our community to the conditions on Paradise and not favorably. This is real stuff. This is scary. It's, it's a legitimate fear that the community has, well grounded in fact, and the planning commission needs to find a public safety adverse impact from this project. Whether or not the potential mitigation measures have been fully examined is a fair question, and it would be reasonable for, for planning commission to continue this item and direct staff to explore potential mitigation measures, including dealing with traffic out of Rancho Santa Fe Road with right-term only access and not requiring a signal at McCam Lane. Similarly, shelter in place considerations for the project not to stream 400-plus additional cars into an already troubling evacuation plan. Second, I want to tackle the to be issue, right? This is a last minute adjustment from the applicant to carve out a portion of the project site that is clearly high slope in a transparent attempt to get away from the inland bluff designation. The to be site is not a legal parcel. There's no evidence to support that. Similarly, there's no title demonstrated for Rancho Santa Fe Road. This is a public road. It isn't part of his private property, and it is not developable in any sense.
Do I wrap it up?
Finally, the mitigation measures in the EI, much as with the Vulcan site, have specific mitigations that the city is required to apply with regards to aesthetics and circulation element that the, that the application has not addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Gretchen Donovan, followed by Sue Brown.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. The rural community of Alivenheim joined the four other regions of Encinitas, Cardiff, Lucadia, Old Encinitas, and New Encinitas in the mid 1980s. At this time, haphazard strip mall style developments were easier to attain by developers in unincorporated counties. So the citizens of Alivenheim felt that being incorporated under Encinitas umbrella would be a mutually beneficial decision. The city of Encinitas would include this semi-rural interface on their eastern border, which would transition west through El Camino Real district, where a thriving commercial corridor was located and eventually end in the long-established coastal communities bordering the Pacific Ocean. Alivenheim would in turn fall under the governance of an established community that would include logical zoning decisions and responsible development guidelines. Unfortunately, illogical state mandates coupled with an apparently unscrupulous developer have resulted in a proposed project that in no way integrates with the existing community character. Nonetheless, we trust our local government will work towards maintaining a degree of responsible development parameters. We, the neighbors, request that this project conforms to the present height parameters of Encinitas and its five neighboring communities. We request that the planning commission, planning commission require the developer to reduce the impacts on the local community, specifically its three neighboring schools. We request that all power lines are undergrounded, particularly those in the heavily vegetated northwest corner. We request that a physical barrier is built to maintain the integrity of the existing neighborhoods where some residents have lived for over 30 years. Lastly, we request that the decisions by the planning commission be mutually beneficial to all members of the community. Undeniably, this project is a threat to public safety and cannot be ignored. Community by definition is that which makes us feel part of something bigger. It doesn't separate us and create division. This project is incredulous. And if it's approved as proposed, it will undoubtedly make our community feel betrayed by our local government. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sue Brown, followed by Patrick Tierney.
I'll see Sue Brown, but I'll try the phone number.
We don't see a Sue Brown in attendance. But we're gonna unmute the phone number here. We'll move forward with Patrick Tierney, followed by Nishant Ketterball.
Hello, this is Patrick Tierney. Thank you, planning commission and planning staff for allowing, allowing us to talk. I, I feel honored to follow such a, such a great lineup of speakers to really point out some of the major issues that, that, the planning commission, the planning staff need to deal with. It's clear that this is a public safety issue. It's clear that there are issues with grade, with height. So I'm not going to rehash you of those. I agree vehemently with, with the problems with this project. One thing I would like the commission and the planning department to think about is, is just the nature of, of the world at this point. You were doing this on Zoom. Why are we doing this on Zoom? Because of a pandemic. What has happened from this pandemic? People have moved out of urban areas and out of apartments. There's a mass exodus out of urban areas and people moving into, to now can work from home and still can work from home. I'm in the high-tech world. I know tons of my colleagues and, and from my company and my other, other companies that I deal with that have great flexibility not to work from home. They don't want to live in a tiny apartment crammed with 400 or 277 other apartments behind a 7-Eleven. It, it, it's ridiculous to think that in this day and age now that we need these types of monstrous complexes, especially in a rural community. It's, it's outrageous to think that this is a necessary thing, even for low-income housing. Fine, you want low-income housing, build a 41-unit low-income housing project that, that meshes with the community. Don't build some monstrosity that is no longer needed in this day and age. Think about the economic factors and the, the way the world is today. I implore you to think logically about that. Get out of the blinders of what's required by the state and all these rules and check this off and check that off. And think about, is this really needed? It's not needed for Encinitas. It's certainly not needed for Alivenheim. So please deny this project. Take it back to the drawing board. You want low-income housing, make it a low-income housing project of something reasonably sized. Don't make it this monstrosity that destroys the character of this beautiful colony of Alivenheim and really of Encinitas in general. It's just a disgusting project. And it's, and it's a project out of greed and hypocrisy. So I think, I hope that all of you see that and, and keep it from ever happening, especially anything like it is now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Nishant Ketterball, followed by David Gaffney.
Yeah, hi there. I'm calling in strong support of this project. I think in particular, the fact that this is eligible for the density bonus and the fact that there is an inclusionary zoning cure going on such that there are affordable units is something that is an unimpeachably good thing. I think especially in light of the heat waves, the extreme weather that we've seen and, and the impacts of climate change, I think that targeting new dense development contributes to lowering carbon emissions on a per capita basis. And I also think that the residents who live here will, will avoid being priced out of coastal areas. They will be in a, in a more low-carbon lifestyle, closer to denser urban areas. They will need to drive less. Some of them may choose not to own cars to take transit. And in particular, in light of the extreme heat waves, we're going to see people, you know, really in refuges from the extreme weather that we're seeing with climate change. You know, you know, even if you go 10, 15 miles inland, you see these extreme 100-degree-plus temperatures, but reliably Encinitas and the coastal areas stay very cool. And so I think it's our responsibility to house people in these areas close to the coast in, in ways that are climate-friendly, that reduce emissions as part of the lifestyle. I think it's a great thing that this development is large, that there's a, an incentive to build this for developers, and that I think it's contributing affordable units in a way that exclusively affordable developments would not be. And so to, to those who criticize that it's not 100% affordable, I, I would put forth that actually the, the fact that it's not 100% affordable is the reason we're getting the volume of affordable units that are going to house families. And, and I think, you know, the people that this, this place will be housing are living in a community that they want to. And, and, you know, because of the way the, the zoning of this, this area, the city is at the present, some of these people may be priced out and they can't live in the way that they'd like to. And so, you know, this is a good project. I'd like to see it approved. And I, I am in strong support. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is David Gaffney, followed by.
Chairman Doyle. Yeah, this is, this is Barry in. I think you're on mute. Yeah, I just wanted to bring, bring to your attention that we've lost Commissioner Sheridan again. I think she has texted us that she's having additional difficulty. At this point, without her participation, we don't have a quorum. So we're going to have to see if we can either resolve that issue or we're going to have to continue the hearing. If we can't get a quorum back.
Fair enough. Two of us can't do this job. I see Susan's name. I see. He's probably gotten into. Someplace with better.
My, my auto hotspot because I had a hotel room just because I wanted to make sure I attended the meeting and had Wi-Fi because I'm out of town. But the hotel Wi-Fi is very poor, unfortunately.
Well, you're a rock star for moving out to your car and doing this. We appreciate it.
What can I do, you know? I missed some things probably that public comments, some of it, but I, but I did, I'm listening most of the time, even if you're not seeing me. But, uh, but I don't know. Maybe we should continue this item. I don't know.
Barry, what do you think?
Number. Is there, is there a way that you can connect where you can at least hear all of the, the testimony? I mean, is it?
I'm, I'm, I'm trying to keep connected, but it, it kept booting me out when I was in the hotel room. So I came out to my car now, and I have a hotspot at my car, so I'm connecting that way, and I'm going to try that.
Okay. Well, are you, are you willing to continue under those circumstances as we continue with public?
I can try. I can try. If it starts disconnecting again. Previously, when I went out to the car, the, the battery on my phone went to nothing. And so I had to charge my phone, but now it's better. So I'm back up to like 70% battery.
So I think the resolution.
My concern is that you're, you're missing some testimony as we go along. And that's, that's of concern because we want to make sure that as a decision maker, you have access to all of the information that's presented. I'm, I'm willing to continue on with the public testimony, assuming you're able to continue to be in contact. But if we have another disconnection, then I, I think I would be recommending that we continue until we get a a firm connection.
I understand.
Yeah. Chairman Doyle, your, your thoughts as well. So.
I see. And you had your hand up. Do you have a comment?
I'm speaking with IT here, and, and there's a call-in number for the Zoom meeting that she can call and hear and speak. So I think a phone call if that, if that would be better reception. It's just a suggestion.
We're going to text her the number.
So they're gonna, Susan, they're gonna text you the number to call in because at least then you'll have two devices. Or I don't know if you're using your phone there, but that might be better reception.
Well, judging by the quality of the video from Susan right now, I can see that you definitely have better connectivity here than you did in your hotel room. I'd say if we're willing to push on, let's, uh, let's, let's do so. I, I agree, Barry, that if, Susan, if we can't keep you on here, we, we probably will have to continue. I agree, Barry, that if Susan, if we can't keep you on here, we probably will have to continue. Steve, do you have any take on this?
Yeah, I think we try to push on, but if it does drop, we should just continue it at that point.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Sounds good. Where are we up to right now?
Our next speaker is David Gaffney.
Oh, I don't see him online.
He's not in attendance, so I'll move forward with Holly Mannion, followed by Leo Macaluso.
Hi, do you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, members of the Commission. My name is Holly Mannion. I am a 67-year resident of Rancho Santa Fe and I'm a lifetime member of the Rancho Historical Society. I and other Rancho Santa Fe residents strongly oppose the Goodson 277-unit apartment project for several reasons. Two of the most important reasons are safety and fire. Rancho Santa Fe is a high-fire-risk area. If there was a fire to the east of Rancho Santa Fe or in Rancho Santa Fe, the Harvest Ranch Market exit would become a death trap from all the congestion. It is terribly congested now. It will be far worse if this massive project is allowed to be built. Where is any off-site evacuation plan that involves Rancho Santa Fe? The second reason is negative impact. Rancho Santa Fe is California State Historic Landmark Number 982 with a Cultural Landscape Amendment. The Goodson Project is a stone's throw from the boundaries of historic Rancho Santa Fe. The Goodson Apartment Project will negatively impact the roads of Rancho Santa Fe as well because of all the traffic. Although a secret review was not required by Encinitas because of low-income housing streamlining exemptions, a secret review is absolutely required if the project significantly affects a historical resource off-site. The project will negatively impact Rancho Santa Fe, California State Historic Landmark 982. I challenge you to account for the negative impacts that affect neighboring communities. The city of Encinitas should ask the developer to look for an alternative site.
Thank you. We don't have Leo. Okay. We don't see Leo Macaluso in attendance, so we will move on to Beth Nelson, followed by Jeff Hack.
Hello. I can hear you. This is Beth Nelson. I'm a member of the San De Guido Planning Group. Our region includes Rancho Santa Fe and directly borders Olinenhain, just a very short distance, about a five-minute walk from where this project is proposed. This project has come to our attention from concerned residents who wonder how it is possible for the city of Encinitas to change the zoning designation to allow such high density on formerly rural residential lots severely impacting the local traffic and community character. We believe the community character would be severely impacted by the proposed size and location of this project. The 61-foot building height, five to six stories, street parking and sidewalks make it appropriate for urban-city development, not a rural neighborhood such as Olinenhain. We believe that the significant bulk and scale of this project will negatively impact the rural surroundings and harm existing property owners. Furthermore, the compounded effect on the traffic in this area could be disastrous. Residents of the San De Guido area in the north and west parts of Rancho Santa Fe use El Canino del Norte and Encinitas Boulevard to exit toward the coast through Olinenhain. This traffic is already heavily congested at peak rush hour times as well as road, school drop-off and pickup times. I myself have sat in backups on many afternoons that stretched from the intersection of Encinitas Boulevard and Rancho Santa Fe Road all the way to the ball fields and golf course in Rancho Santa Fe, a distance of 1.4 miles. It can take a good half an hour or more to travel that stretch. In emergency situations such as wildfire evacuation of people and large animals would be impeded by the hundreds of cars added by this development and is a recipe for disaster. In closing, the San De Guido Planning Group believes this project is incompatible and grossly out of character for rural Olinenhain and nearby Rancho Santa Fe, will compound the existing traffic congestion on the surrounding roads and endanger the entire community in case of wildfire evacuation. We urge you to deny this project. Contrary to what Mr. Goodson stated earlier, this is not Olinenhain or Rancho Santa Fe-inspired. Far from it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Jeff Hack, followed by Jenny Hack. Neither are in attendance. Next, we'll have Julie Thunder, followed by Gary Marston.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Heard valid reasons from the people of Olinenhain regarding this oversized project. Only they can speak of their fears of escaping a wildfire. Only they can define how 277 additional units will change their historic community forever. I'm here to remind you that you, the commissioners, are the only line of defense the taxpayers have on this housing plan that's bringing 14 other mini-Goodson projects affecting thousands of residents. Considering the mayor and council are siding with the state over the very residents they represent, we are all hoping that you, the commissioners, will be on our side. I want to thank each of you for stepping up to serve during this contentious time in our young city's history. It was this very commission that did the right thing in recommending a 50% affordability rate from the developers of the improperly upzoned sites like this Goodson Project. It's terribly disappointing that the mayor and council, along with the Olinenhain Council representative, rejected your recommendation, instead choosing to make the developers and landowners even richer by first, upzoning their properties, making them worth millions of dollars more, and second, allowing them to build more market-rate housing and less affordable housing. And who pays the price for this developer giveaway by the council? Us, the taxpayers. The price we'll pay is increased traffic, decreased safety, crowded schools, and a behind-the-times infrastructure that may never catch up. Commissioners, tonight, you're faced with the first shot across the bow from developers of the more egregious R30 sites. You know and I know, there will be more coming before you soon. And while we didn't vote for you, you have accepted the responsibility to be our community representatives and we're relying on you to defend our city and help us grow in a more rational and sensible way. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Gary Marston, followed by Laurel Leymarie. Gary, are you there?
He's unmuted. He has his hand up and can't hear anything.
We can hear you somewhat.
Somewhat? Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Great. I guess my microphone had to wake up after this long wait. Just kidding. I'm a 22-year resident of Olinenhain and I want to thank the commissioners and the planning commission entirety for all the hard work you put behind this. A lot has been said tonight, so I'm not going to review all of the details in regards to that. I just want to make the final statement of there's over 5,000 homeowners in Olinenhain and we're being asked to do a very large amount of concessions for a very minimal to no benefits to the homeowners as well as to the city. The affordable housing units do not really meet the true intent of the state law to provide affordable housing units to families. So you've received a lot of conflicting technical information, which I know you still need to probably process. So I just encourage the planning commission to take their time, do the due diligence, review that data because we have spent a lot of money in the background to get our experts as well. So it's expert opinion against expert opinion. You'll need to digest that, validate it and determine what's the right decision. We expect that you will make the right decisions for the residents within the community of Encinitas as well as Olinenhain. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Laurel Leymarie, followed by Gerald Kessler.
Unmute. Yes. Hello. Ah, nine o'clock. Great. Dear planning commissioners, first of all, I'm a 45-year resident of Rancho Santa Fe. I use Encinitas all the time for everything, so you're my go-to place. The ranch, I'm reading this from the Rancho Santa Fe Association. The association strongly opposes a Goodson apartment project because of substantial safety and environmental impacts due to increased traffic, noise, air pollution, light pollution, construction and more. However, the most serious risk to our region's safety will surface during an emergency such as a wildfire when evacuation is slowed or stalled due to increased traffic around the development. Major evacuation routes for much of Rancho Santa Fe include Rancho Santa Fe Road, Manchester and Encinitas Boulevard. If hundreds of additional cars were evacuating from the proposed apartments onto Rancho Santa Fe Road or Encinitas Boulevard during a wildfire, it would cause dangerous disastrous gridlock. This is no time to reconsider evacuation routes when wildfires are burning, threatening our homes and properties. Significant traffic increases will also delay emergency crews responding to fires, medical issues, criminal activity, traffic accidents and other time-sensitive situations. Traffic is a serious concern for residents of Rancho Santa Fe and surrounding communities. Currently, traffic in the area's proposed project is already heavy and hazardous around the road, school, neighborhood, shopping centers and other businesses. During rush hour, each morning and afternoon, bumper-to-bumper traffic snakes down Rancho Santa Fe Road, Manchester, La Bahada, El Mirlo, Los Moros, Lenoria, El Camino Real and Encinitas Boulevard. The impact of an additional 500 to 600 vehicles in this area due to proposed development is alarming. The risk and impact of this apartment project is far too great for our communities. On behalf of the Rancho Santa Fe Road Association, I respectfully ask that you consider serious risks and impacts of this development and stop it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Gerald Kessler, followed by Emily Lucas.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, here we go. The Goodson Project is another nightmare housing project. Can you read the room, Randy? It does not fit the area if you have been trying to put this up since 2007. Again, you get the lawyer, the architect and everyone talking just to confuse the lay public like myself. I'm not directly impacted, but indirectly. I travel Encinitas Boulevard and live off it as many residents speaking tonight frequently. And no matter what time of the day, it's jammed. This is perhaps an oversight by the city council, again, approving projects before it has proper infrastructure. I'm fairly new at expressing my concerns about these thoughtlessness, environmental nightmare projects. But I have been educating myself since January 2021 when the density bonus law AB234 gives out-of-towner developers free rein to the right to slam 31 homes on 6.7 acres in my neighborhood. I fear that we will all be in the same place as the people that live in Lucadia are now, where it's going to take $20 million loan to build the streetscape project. Lucadia has been allowed to build up without the proper infrastructure. And as a result, it has suffered multiple fatalities on the 101 and perhaps that disastrous bluff collapsed in August 2018 from construction from the new fancy hotel that was built there. I think that you should back off this Goodson project and work with the community instead of slamming an eyesore housing in the area that is already super congested. No wonder Bruce excused himself and Amy quit. Do the right thing. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Emily Lucas, followed by Rich Heisner.
So I really want to thank everybody who's been on the call for a really long time and those of us who've been attending many, many, many of these meetings. I just want to echo, I don't think, I think all the data has been presented and what I would like the commission to really sit back and think, if you lived here, if you were living on the corner of Encinitas Boulevard and Manchester Avenue, how would you feel about this project? Is this the neighborhood that you moved to? That you moved here 20 years ago because you could have a horse in your backyard? This is not UTC. This is not Delmar Highlands. We all moved here to live in this community as a community, not as a high-rise with a social area and a fancy pool and, you know, a bunch of young teenage kids who can, their parents can afford to pay for their rent. This is not the community that we moved to. And I really encourage the commission to think about if you lived here, is this the development that is right for this community? Our community is extremely supportive of providing housing and low-income housing. I don't think there is a single person in Encinitas who is not supportive of that. This development does not do that. So let's be real. Let's really focus on what the real problem is and not destroy a community just because a developer has an opportunity because of state laws in order to make a huge amount of money. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, we have Rich Heisner, followed by Michelle Detweiler. Rich Heisner is not in attendance, so we will have Michelle Detweiler, followed by Brian Lucas.
I don't see Michelle either.
Michelle is not on the call either, so we'll go Brian Lucas.
Guys, hey, this is Brian Lucas. Thank you very much. So what I wanted to say, obviously, I have two very important points I want to make. And the first one, obviously, has been pretty much gone over by a lot of my fellow citizens. Some with some very detailed information on that's obviously the infrastructure. Now, just add on to that, just if anybody on this commission or anybody in the city council that lives out here that has been on Rancho Santa Fe Road in the morning or in the afternoon, think about that, plus 472 other cars. It's a crazy spot to put this type of, this type of project in. The second point I wanted to make, and I feel this is actually even more important, is that this project hardly even does anything to actually help solve the problem of lack of affordable housing in Encinitas. The state has allowed for several loopholes for developers to put forward projects with embarrassingly small numbers of affordable units. That alone shows you the state is not serious about solving the problem. And I use the base density law as that example. There are several citizen groups throughout Southern California that are currently trying to fight the state and close those loopholes. I believe the Goodson Project requires 15%, so basically 42 of those units out of the 283 units are considered low income. Yes, the state has mandated an extremely low number for developers. But how about this? How about the commission and the city council states, developer, you need to have more affordable units in your development project. That would actually show how serious we are about solving this problem. With such low numbers of affordable units in these huge projects, it would be impossible to even get close to the state-mandated numbers of affordable units, which is right now 1,500 units by 2029. It would take 37 of these Goodson projects to hit that number. That is essentially, the 32 units in the Goodson Project is 3% of that number. We're never going to get there with projects like this. It just shows that the city council. It just shows that the city council, like the state, really doesn't seem to want to solve the problem. However, our community does, and we put forth many alternative proposals. Worse, it shows that the city council's royalties are with the large developers and not with their citizens. Just look at how much support, financial and otherwise, these developers gave the current mayor in the last election cycle.
And your terms are up, so if you could please wrap it up?
Absolutely. In closing, the goal is to make more affordable housing, as much affordable housing as we can. I agree with the architect who spoke earlier. This is a beautiful project for Vegas, not a small rural residential community. And if any of you live here, I think you would agree that this proposal, this proposed project does not fit in this part of Encinitas. There are many other areas that it can work in. Just because they hit all the design boxes they checked off does not make it the right call. Put yourself in the shoes of the people who live in this vicinity. A project this big should not go into a rural residential zone. Bottom line is, even if there were two-hundred-and-eighty-three affordable units in this project, the same problems exist. It can't work in this location. There are better spots in Encinitas. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Stephen Lord is not in attendance. Next speaker will be Glenn Cobre, followed by Matthew Fredrich.
Hello, this is Glenn Cobre. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, everything that I wanted to say has pretty much been covered by Juliana, Amy McCord, and Jim Frost, but I, just one, one thing that I want to point out is, think about this project going down the street, going in down the street from you, excuse me. And I always think that new projects should be something that we're proud of and that we, that we enjoy looking at over time. With this, every time I see pictures of it, I, I just dislike it more and more every time. It's, it's truly a monstrosity, and we just don't have the infrastructure for it. And, and I really hope that everyone can, can oppose it and send them back to the drawing boards or else find a new location for it, but it just, it'll leave in hide, so. Thank you very much for your, for your time.
Matthew Fredrich is not in attendance? Okay, and neither is Henry Kurtz. What about Lorraine Kent? Not in attendance. Geraldine Afshari, followed by Mark Mayer. Geraldine, you should be able to speak.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I agree with the, my fellow citizens that this is an unwise project for many reasons for our city. I've, I've lived here since nineteen eighty-five, and I'm a Southern California native and a coastal girl, and I've raised my kids here, and I so, so want there to be affordable housing so children can grow up and live where they grew up. But this is not that. This is a bait and switch, and I'm just offended by that. And by the size of it, it is a wonderful, it's very urban, and it's, it'd be great in a city situation, not here. But the huge thing for me is the fire, the reality. I had to evacuate once, and it was scary as hell. I took everything in my car, and I thought I won't see my, my house again. And we have worse fire events now. That, that was years ago and seems like nothing compared to what's happening in our state and in our world. So we need to be proactive in planning, and this is very unsafe, and it puts everybody's lives at risk for no benefit, except for, for Goodson. I mean, it's a developer's bonanza, but it's not for our city. So please, please, don't do that and put affordable housing near public transit. It needs to be near the corridors so we can have more green, we can have more train use, more public transport. This is out in a rural zone with cars, so it doesn't make any sense. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mark Mayer, followed by Jill Treadwell Svenson.
This is Mark. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. As a ten-year homeowner on Candy Lane, located on the south side of Encinitas Boulevard, directly opposite McCain Lane, I can speak on behalf of my fellow homeowners that we are vehemently opposed to the proposed project based on numerous issues that have already been discussed in great detail already by some great experts. The traffic, the wildfire evacuation, and the public safety issues, along with the, the project scope and the totally inappropriate size of the project for this neighborhood, make this project a complete rejection. I ask that the city stand up to this bullying, and I ask that the planning commission use common sense in denying this project. I live here. None of us want it here. If you lived here too, you'd feel the same way. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Jill Treadwell Svenson, followed by Jim Mosher.
Hello, my name is Jill Treadwell Svenson, and I've lived in Leavenheim for over thirty years, and this is a project that is inconsistent with our community, our neighborhood, and will not be a good thing for our city. It will pose a risk as residents for our safety in case of fire, and the traffic is now almost unbearable, and with this additional traffic will increase that problem. So I ask you to please consider this as a detriment to our community, and my husband Bob would like to speak.
Well, I'm just going to speak specifically to the notion that McLean Lane could be considered a, an appropriate ingress and egress opportunity for this property. Anyone that is common sense would recognize that that's, it's a small little alleyway, could not possibly handle the traffic of four to five hundred cars per day, and as those cars exit and ingress onto Encinitas Boulevard, it's just going to cause more problems than it could ever potentially solve. So just go out and look at McLean Lane. It's absurd to think that that's the entry solution for this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jim Mosher, followed by Janet Fisher.
Vice Chair Doyle Commissioners, can you hear me? Okay, good. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Nineteen eighty-six, my wife and I bought a property about a mile and a quarter from the intersection of Rancho Santa Fe Road, Manchester, and Encinitas Boulevard. And, you know, that three, four, three, five, some years, we've seen, you know, the city grow, population increase, both have seen traffic increase. And, you know, I can't imagine a worse scenario, you know, just being stuck in commuter traffic with the addition of a, you know, a large six-story complex and four hundred additional cars. And I think all the points about, you know, emergency egress, you know, the congestion are, have been well made. I just want to echo the concerns people have about safety and also community character. It just doesn't fit. It wouldn't, it wouldn't fit where we live a mile and a quarter from there, to have it in the middle of a bunch of homes. And I think there are other better locations closer to major thoroughfares. You know, it's a city property near the corner of Coyle Gardens Drive and Encinitas Boulevard, close to the freeway. And some really good points tonight made about affordable housing, which this is not. And I thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I respectfully ask that you deny the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Janet Fisher, followed by James Dederman.
Jane is not, James is here.
Janet is not? Janet Fisher is not in attendance, so we will have James Dederman, followed by Sharon Fogg.
Hello?
Hi, we can hear you.
Okay, I didn't necessarily put it into talk, but I will, I guess. I think that the Encinitas RRD made a lot of important points on this, and I hope the commission will, will take those into account. I'm very concerned about the evacuation, the effect on, yeah, the fire evacuation, the effect on night skies. I'm also very concerned that this is a huge project, which is not going to do very much to actually mitigate low-income housing issues, especially if most of the units that are being used for low-income housing are, are just singles, basically. So anyway, that's what I would like to say. I hope the commission will take all of these things into consideration and consider rejecting this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Sharon Fogg, followed by Chris Noonan.
Sharon, you need to unmute.
You should be able to unmute your microphone. Do you want to go ahead and move on?
Yeah, we'll go back to her.
We'll come back to you, Sharon. Next, we have Chris Noonan, followed by Amber Hoxa.
Hi, my name's Chris Noonan, and I've, was born and raised in Encinitas. I'm a fourth-generation Encinita and have seen this little town, this beach town, grow up in some good ways and some rough ways. I live about three hundred yards from this project, and my backyard is Encinitas Boulevard. And we're actually in the backyard playing cards right now, and we just had a stream of cars going by. And the impact of this project would make it nearly impossible to make it on Encinitas Boulevard, Rancho Santa Fe Road, Manchester, in a timely manner. The rush hour times are absolutely horrendous. In the afternoon, our backyard, the traffic has stopped, and I would just like to see the character of Encinitas continue to be the beach town character that it should be. Projects like this have no place in Encinitas. Like the people said before, they belong in cities, and it's a beautiful project, but not here. I think we should go forward with building smarter, single-unit homes with granny flats, and that's my two cents. I'm a school teacher here. I love this community, fortunate enough to have been able to be raised and continue to live here and raise my family. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, thank you. Next, we have Amber Hoxa, followed by Sharon Fogg.
Hello? Hello?
We can hear you.
Bring you up to date on this matter, because I know you're concerned about it. We got, Friday night, got a message from Khrushchev, which said that he would withdraw these missiles and technicians and so on, providing we did not plan to invade Cuba. We then got a message, the public one, the next morning, in which he said he would do that if we withdrew our missiles from Turkey. We then, as you know, issued a statement that we couldn't get into that deal, so.
JFK impersonation?
This morning. So we now have to wait to see how it unfolds, and there's a good deal of complexities to it. If the, the withdrawal of these missiles, technicians.
All right, see, we should cut this. JFK.
Activity by them.
We're listening to a recording of John and F. Kennedy.
Because yesterday, the United States was.
Okay.
Yes. Our last speaker would be Sharon Fogg. Sharon, can you unmute yourself?
You hit the microphone icon in the bottom left, Sharon.
That, that concludes our public speakers for this item.
Well, now. Thank you for everyone. I'm going to leave public comment open for a little bit here. I did want to address one issue. I was raised by Amy McCord and several others that by limiting people to two minutes, we had unfairly leveraged their comments, and I kept track in that same PDF. We had ten speakers in a row, which should have come in to a little over twenty minutes, so I, I think parity has been achieved. We, trust me, we've been reading thousands of pages of commentary and, and doing a lot of research on this project, and your voice was heard tonight as clearly as anyone else's. And I think I'd like to move on to commissioner deliberation. There's only three of us here. Steve, I think, and first, Susan.
Susan. Does the applicant have a chance to?
Oh, yes. Thank you, Steve. This is, as anyone might be obvious, this is my first time chairing this. Randy, I'd like to give you five minutes to respond, if that's okay with you.
Commissioners, chairman, staff, and in the public, thank you all for the time you've invested in understanding the Encinitas Boulevard Apartments project. There, the comments really, I think, fall into two broad categories. The biggest category has really already been debated. It was debated for many, many years, and it was settled several years ago that this site was the best site in this region to upzone to R thirty. And I won't go into all of those debates because they were extensive, and it's not possible to do that. But that's really already, you know, that, that's water under the bridge. We are here where we are, and my team, we have presented the best project that we can. We have not gone for maximum density. We have not gone for maximum height. We have gone for the minimum height that is necessary to accommodate a project that meets the city's ordinances. And again, going back to RRM's analysis. again, going back to RRM's analysis, RRM absolutely made our point that it is not possible to build this project without the waivers requested for height, for stories, and for storage. And I'd like you to look at the last exhibit in my PowerPoint. And I'd like you to ask yourselves just the rational question. So again, summarizing, one of the things that Tim Hutter pointed out is that state law, under waivers, does not differentiate between a waiver that's requested and one that is maybe being requested for too much. So I think staff's position is that they think that our waivers are more than is necessary in that we are asking for five stories instead of three, or five stories instead of four, pardon me. And RRM thinks that maybe we could build this in four stories, which the evidence is contrary to that. We cannot. But if a waiver is necessary, it must be granted. And you don't get to say, oh, well, the waiver could be four stories, and you've asked for five. The evidence presented by RRM themselves is that there must be a waiver for stories, full stop. When then you go to the fact that they're agreeing to a waiver for stories, but then they say we don't need a waiver for height? That is, does not make sense. They are calculating height in a way that is not consistent with the way city staff has documented that height is to be calculated. And it just doesn't make sense if you have a four-story building that they've agreed to, that you could build it in under 39 feet. That's not possible. And then lastly, as to storage, I've commented on storage. I won't repeat myself. They're making an assumption that storage can be constructed, installed in the parking structure, but they don't know and understand all of the utilities that need to go in the parking structure, hanging from the ceiling. And it's run, you know, there's all types of conduit and utilities going through the parking structure. If there are additional locations to put storage, as we told staff, we will, once it's completed. But we won't know until the project is completed where we can add additional storage. So those are really the issues, and the evidence is absolutely clear that there is no alternative project that does not require those three waivers. With that, thank you very much for your consideration. We very, very much need to have a unanimous vote this evening. And, and so, you know, whatever that takes, you know, we hope for a unanimous vote of approval. But if we cannot get a unanimous vote of approval, you know, please send us along and allow us to, you know, take this argument, you know, to the next stage. We can only do that with unanimous vote this evening. Thank you very much. I'm available for any questions as well.
We will keep public comment open in case we have any questions from commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Moving on, what do we have next? How is everyone feeling? It's been a couple of hours sitting here. Does anyone need a break?
I think we should decide whether we're, we're going to extend the time.
Yes, it's 20 minutes before 10. Thank you very much, Steve.
I have, I have to say that I'm a little bit worried that my car, which has to have its engine on to have Wi-Fi, could overheat. And it is 20 minutes to 10. I'm wondering if we could continue this to the next meeting.
I think.
And commissioners, again, with all due respect, I apologize for jumping in. I really respect your time. You know, we, we really are requesting to have a vote this evening and to seek a unanimous vote, you know, whatever that is. Thank you for considering that request, and I apologize for interrupting.
Fair enough. Steve?
The problem is that I'm, the Wi-Fi I'm accessing from my auto, I have to have the engine on the whole time, or I don't have the Wi-Fi. And I did get a hotel room for tonight to try, you know, to have Wi-Fi for the meeting, because I'm out of town, but the Wi-Fi was very bad. So I'm really sorry, but the thing is that the car's been on for quite a while, and it isn't the best situation for me.
Sharon?
I'm asking.
Do you think you could go another, could you go another 20 minutes, do you think, and not extend it past 10?
Hey, Susan, this is Dave in IT. So I sent you the number. You can call in on your phone with the number, and you have the passcode. And if you do that, you can at least hear and you can talk and not have to worry about your car overheating.
Or Wi-Fi.
Or Wi-Fi.
Well, that's possible. That's true. But you know, I have hearing loss, and I do like to be able to see the visual when I'm doing a meeting like this. The phone alone leaves out a lot without visual.
Think we can make it to 10? I think we should, honestly, this is concerning. I mean, 20 minutes is not really much for for committee, commission deliberation.
Maybe, maybe we could take a straw poll on where we stand with regards to the staff recommendation that the alternate, I think this comes down to me, is whether the waivers are appropriate to request, or whether the city has the ability to deny the waivers. Is maybe a straw poll there and see if we can move past that or not.
Well, one other thing, I think, Steve, you remember that bullet list that the applicant showed on his PowerPoint of all of those different items. I would really like to see RRM respond to each of those bulleted items. I would like more detail. I would like more information about the detail, why they say it's not necessary to have the height. I would like more information. And I think the applicant deserves to have more information as well.
Well, to be fair, there was, if you went on our staff report.
Your screen is frozen for me.
Oh. Can you hear me? I was gonna say, when in the staff report, we've got the RRM proposal, we have the.
Steve's screen's frozen to me. I don't know.
No, Steve, I see Steve moving. Everyone do this.
Actually, I think I've.
I think it's, I think it's you we've lost, Susan. And this may be a situation beyond our control type situation. Susan, I got a feeling it's on your end here. We're all kind of moving around still and speaking. And we have now lost Susan Sheridan. Well, no.
Maybe, maybe we could take a five-minute break, Kevin.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea, Steve.
Ask Susan dialing, okay.
I just hear.
I'm back, but it disconnected again. So I, I really think I would like to move to continue this item for our next meeting.
Unmute there, Steve. There's only three of us here. I honestly.
I feel like unless we're going to be unanimous in one way or the other, anything we do tonight is going to be a split vote. And the applicant has been at this a long time. I think they would rather we, they leave with a denial tonight, rather than be continually postponed to another and another and another meeting. So.
My, my concern is if we do a denial with no discussion, it's going to counsel with no discussion on our part on any of the numerous issues that are on any project this size. You know, we haven't, you know, I'd like to ask the fire marshal about, are we really in a fire safety zone? I'd like to ask Abe a couple of questions. There's, there's, yeah, if we just kick this off to counsel, we're not doing our job. That's my concern. Counsel's gonna say, did you ask about this? Did you ask about that? We haven't done anything. We've just listened to a lot of public comment. I mean, I could go on, but honestly, if we're gonna lose 10, then that's.
Yeah.
We're not gonna finish. We're just not gonna finish. And Mr. Goodson, I understand your position. You're not the first one to express this frustration, but you know, doing these meetings as we are on Zoom, everything takes a little bit longer. I mean, our, whatever, 47 public comments took significantly longer than they would have any other time.
So Susan has expressed interest in hearing more data regarding the RRM alternative design. I'm of the opinion that, that we don't have the right to request that. I don't think it's the applicant's responsibility to consider every possible alternative. They've designed a project based on the criteria that only they know what their operations, their cost structure, their, the way they want to approach the development. And so I don't think it's the city's right to come in and say, well, you could do an alternate project. But we don't know all of the facts or all the details about how this developer wants to.
Are you guys there? I've lost this.
You're frozen again, Susan. Can you hear us? I'm gonna hope she can, because Steve, I do want to address that, because I don't think we, we want to specifically avoid trying to design this project from the dais. This comes up a lot. So when I look at the RRM proposal, all I'm really, I don't care if their proposal is perfect or whichever one's perfect. All it does is it, this is a quasi-judicial proceeding, and I look at that, and it's, it does provide some, an indication that you could do it without a six-story waiver, and you could do it without a 61 and a half foot height. And so we're not trying to say that it has to be 30 or it has to be anything. I don't think that's our, our position. I don't think that's in our, under our authority to say so.
But to get there, I think RRM has to make subjective decisions about how to prioritize open space versus developed area, how to prioritize setback versus height, right? The, in order to avoid increasing the height, they had to move significantly closer to Rancho Santa Fe Road. And, you know, they've made a subjective decision about which criteria to prioritize over other criteria. And the project, as it was submitted, made a priority to stay back away from Rancho Santa Fe Road. And so I don't think it's right to decide within some alternate study to say, well, we'll, we'll reduce that setback. You'll get less open space around your building, or maybe less, fewer views, or any number of other subjective criteria. Those had, those choices had to be made in order to create that alternate plan.
I'm just pulling something up. Yeah.
I really, I really think we don't have time to hash it out before 10 o'clock, number one. And number two, I disconnected again twice without my doing it, you know, my, my phone just hung up twice. So I think, I think we need to continue this, as I said before. And I did move to continue it. I don't know if we had a second on that or not.
We did not yet, but we also haven't called it dead for lack of a second. Honestly, looking at this, I'll, I'll second your motion, Susan, although honestly, it's like, I don't see how this is gonna move forward. We, every vote here must be unanimous, otherwise it's not happening. If we end up with a split vote, this is not going forward. And quite frankly, I don't think we've gonna end up with a unanimous vote to deny or to or to approve this project, one way or the other. I mean, that's my reading of the consensus. And I do think we could hash this out. I doubt we can hash this out in nine minutes.
I agree. We're not gonna finish this.
I do think that RRM should provide a response to that bullet list. I don't think that it's any more fair for the applicant to come up with a bunch of supposition about what RRM knows or doesn't know about escape ladders and this and that, because maybe they did think about all of that when they did their feasibility. We don't know, because, you know, that didn't, it's, they didn't say it specifically.
I thought that they, they did include in the staff report, there was a response.
The applicant looking at what RRM did, or for us, you know, to look at what RRM did and just, oh, we're, oh, well, I think they had the ladders, you know, and I think they had the, you know, enough space for the mechanic. We can't do that, but RRM could clarify that information. And so I would like to add to that motion to continue that when they come back, that we have more detail from RRM about why they think that height isn't necessary, addressing those bullet points brought up by the applicant to satisfy the public and the applicant list. Basically, they made a list of things, and I think they should be addressed.
I wish I could say I agree. I'm, I'm looking at the list. The list is very, many subjective things. You know, it's conceptual. It's not been proven to meet design standards. No dimension provided. I don't see how RRM would respond to this. This is not really a bullet list of things to be responded to. This is just a of pointing out of perceived faults. So, and it, there's very little quantifiable in the, I did screen caps this as these presentations were going by. But I am not, I don't really think it's worthwhile to have RRM do additional studies on this. I think, of course, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Kevin. Go ahead. I'm agreeing with you.
Okay.
It's a, you know.
Well, but I think we only have like six minutes till 10 o'clock. We, we need to decide what to do about continuing.
Any agreement to follow staff's recommendation to deny the project?
You're right. We could do that.
Oh, yeah, I'm leaning that way right now, based on the evidence presented tonight. But I have, share my concerns. There's, this is gonna go to council, council, and we have not done our job. We have not done our job.
I would, I think we'd be doing a service to the applicant. He's been at this for quite some time. And I'll remind the commission, under state law, that I think there's only five public hearings that are allowed for this project before an action has to be taken. And if we can't move it through the planning commission, it can't even make it, you know, it's way too.
Our second.
This is counting as our second. And if we keep.
We certainly can continue it, though. We have the option to continue it.
But, but then council's only gonna get two, there's only two more public meetings after that.
Two shots at it, and there'll be 47 more, you know, public speakers at the council hearing. And then it's gonna be more and more out of even their hands. So I would make a motion to close the public hearing and, I guess, approve the staff recommendation to deny the project.
Thank you. If I may, Mr. Chairman, I believe there was already a motion on the.
There is a motion on the floor.
Wait a second.
And that was, now, that was a motion by Susan Sheridan to continue, and I did second that motion. So let's real quick call the question. If we could, or, let's say, I'll call the question. All in favor of continuing it?
Aye.
Put up your hand. And opposed?
Aye, or no? I, or no?
So split vote, the motion fails for lack of quorum. And Steve, you had a motion. What was that? Can you rephrase that?
My motion is to close the public hearing and approve the staff report to deny the project.
I'm not comfortable supporting that just yet, Steve. Susan, I see. Feeling similar. Motion dies for lack of a second.
Okay.
Um.
So, so I.
We can have discussion on that, right? I mean, I don't think we have had discussion on all of the various aspects of the project, to the point that we're ready to approve or deny it. Personally, I don't, I don't feel ready.
Okay. I, I'll make a motion to continue, uh, continue the project to a, a date certain.
Third bite of the apple. I'll, uh.
Second.
Call the question. All in favor?
If I could, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
The motion was to continue to a date certain. We need to.
Oh, yes. We have no date. So well, the vote was premature. Thank you, Roy.
Yes. If I couldn't. To the chair?
I'm all ears.
As Commissioner Dalton indicated that there's, the state law provisions limit the number of hearings for by right projects. As you've also indicated that this is the second hearing. So we do have three hearings left. As I also indicated earlier, in terms of the replacement for the Lucadia Commissioner, that commissioner most likely will be seated on August 19th to avoid any potential continuance. If I could suggest that we continue the item to August 19th in order to have an additional commissioner onboard to minimize the potential for more continuance.
I, I would amend my motion to, one, close the public hearing and continue the project until August 19th.
Second.
Thank you, Susan. And now we call the question. All in, all in favor of the motion?
I.
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 No, no one here to be opposing.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just jump in, please, just for a moment.
Do please, Mr. Goodson.
To the extent, well, clearly there's a continuance. And to Commissioner Sheridan's point, as it relates to RRM, please ask them to quantify the gross square footage, the net square footage, the height, the stories, and the open space in their plans. And to also look at how many stories of residential are buried below grade, particularly in the northwest corner where it looks to be three levels are below grade.
Fair question.
They mentioned they didn't need windows, but those units will need windows and, and all types of access.
Fair enough.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sorry, we weren't able to finish this for everyone concerned. It is 10 o'clock. And so we're, this item is continued until a date certain of August 19th. And looking at our agenda, I wonder if Bruce has gone to sleep already. Moving on to the agenda, any future agenda items added by planning commissioners?
None.
Nothing. Planning Commission reports, Roy?
I believe this is the commissioner, if there's anything to report of.
Oh, yeah. Planning Commission, Planning Commission reports. That's an odd news. I have, I have nothing to report. Anybody?
Nothing.
It's been a slow month. And Director, I'm sorry. Now your turn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Nothing to report. The only thing is, want to remind the, the public about the August 3rd Mobility Element Workshop. It'll be at the community center at 6:00 PM.
And I'd like to make a notice also for anyone who's listening, public comment on this case is now closed. So if you have additional things to say, put them in writing. But we will not be listening to public comments at our next meeting on August 19th on this issue.
Can I ask for, can I ask for a clarification?
Of course.
Are we meeting before August? Is August 19th our next meeting? Or is there an, an August 1st?
August 5th meeting, I think.
Yes.
Right. Okay. And is August 5th in person or is it Zoom?
Virtual.
Virtual.
Is the 19th virtual?
19th will be our first in-person meeting.
Oh. Wow, how exciting. All right. Thank you very much, everyone. I'm adjourning this meeting till our next meeting of August 5th. Thank you all for your help and your time to this evening.
Kevin.
Have a good night.
Good night, everyone.